Like to call to order the November seventh, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Uba City. Can we have the call, uh, roll call, please?
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Deadball.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Characters tonight. Um, yeah, uh, we're gonna have, uh, I'm gonna have Councilman John Buckland do the invocation, but I would like to ask Don Schrader if he would lead us in, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance. So after the invocation, thank you, after the invocation.
We bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of those that are gathered here tonight. We are truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance in our community. We are grateful to our first responders who face difficult challenges to main art maintain our sense of a safe place to live. We ask you to watch over each one of them in their daily duties. Tonight, once again, we pray for the victims and families of a mass shooting. Our thoughts are with those in the small Texas community of Sutherland Springs, which was torn apart by a senseless act of violence. We are grateful for the heroic response of two citizens who prevented further death and injury following the initial attack. Tonight, we ask your healing hand on those that are struggling to survive injuries in this attack. In the words of many survivors, prayer makes a difference in the struggle to survive. Tonight, I ask each of you to take a few moments at this time to pray in your own way for the victims and families of those that were injured. It's in your most blessed name that we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You never know when you're gonna get called up for duty. Think you guys understand that? Okay. We have a, um, right off the bat, a life-saving award, and that is actually gonna be presented in whole, uh, by Chief of Police Rob Landon to Jatinder Mann. Or Mann. Jen, would you come up here, please? We have the honor today of, uh, in front of his peers to present Officer, Reserve Officer Jatinder Mann with the life-saving award. If I could at this moment, I'd like to have his life demo and his two kids, Jevan and Jaren, come up. God, man, keep telling. Commander Tappy's gonna read the citation.
Pardon me. On August twelfth, twenty seventeen, at one fifty-seven in the morning, Uba City Police Officers were dispatched to the water tower on Pluma Street for a female who started to climb up the tower. Upon arrival, the female informed officers she intended to end her life by jumping from the tower. The female made it about fifty feet up the tower. She began walking back and forth across the beam, then hanging off the edge of the beam threatening to jump. Several attempts to negotiate with the female were made by responding officers. However, their efforts were met with resistance from the female. Reserve Officer Jatinder Mann began talking with the female and was eventually able to build a rapport with her. Officer Mann maintained a conversation with the female and was able to get her to think rationally about her intentions. Officer Mann was able to prevent the female from committing suicide and convinced her to climb down, uh, on her own accord. Officer Mann took the initiative to step into a role which is not always required or expected of a reserve officer. Officer Mann handled the situation with poise and empathy for the female, which ultimately brought this incident to a successful conclusion. Officer Mann's actions reflect compassion, professionalism, and dedication to his duty as a peace officer and are in keeping with the highest standards of police service. It is hereby ordered Officer Jatinder Mann be awarded the Uba City Police Department's Life Saving Medal for his actions on August twelfth, twenty seventeen.
I'm gonna let him talk in just a second. He wanted to let me know, thank you, Mayor. He wanted to let me know just how, uh, how impressed he was that Reserve Officer Mann took the time to talk to this person and talked him, talked her down. Because without that, it's hard to make that, to realize the dramatis, the dramatic effect that could possibly happen when you're not there in the middle of the night and this person is out there trying to end her life. So Kenny, I appreciate the phone call, but he definitely wanted to let me know how impactful that was to him and to everybody, so I want.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commander. Uh, thank you, all my fellow officers in the back. Um, this is not an individual award as, uh, um, we all know, this is, I'm backed by some of the greatest officers in the country, and, uh, this is just a tribute to the training that I've obtained from my years being here. It starts from the top and it goes down to the training. Officer Jackson, uh, trained me right out of the gate, go fresh out of the academy. Um, some of those words in training, um, and you don't think about when you're training, come out when you're out in the field in high stress level. And, uh, I just can't thank all of them enough to give me the opportunity to be here and represent them, but this is a team award. I'd like to acknowledge all them in the back. I do this, uh, three hundred sixty-five days a year and, uh, um, you know, for my family, they're watching over all of us, so thank you, sir.
We'll pause. You got guys out there that need to hit the road and get their stuff done. Yep, protect us. I must say they've been exemplary, uh, police force the last month or so with all the, uh, interesting, uh, comings and goings of people and having to deal with some of the, the worst of humanity, so, uh, they've done a great job this last couple of months, especially above and beyond. Okay, I'd like to move on to, uh, item number two, which is, uh, I'd like to, uh, welcome, uh, Mike Nichols, President of the Uba Sutter Stand Down, also, uh, a United States Army veteran, uh, from Vietnam. Also, I'd like to introduce the Veteran Stand Down, if anybody doesn't know about it, before I have, uh, have actually a presentation. The original stand down for the homeless veterans was modeled after the stand down concept used during the Vietnam War to provide safe retreat for units returning from combat operations. At secure base camp areas, troops were able to take care of personal hygiene, get clean uniforms, enjoy warm meals, although some of them kinda argued that, uh, uh, receive medical and dental care, uh, mail and receive letters, and enjoy the camaraderie of friends in a safe environment. The Uba Sutter Veteran Stand Down has been refined to meet the needs of our veterans, the homeless or not, all active duty personnel and their dependents. Uh, the Uba Sutter Stand, uh, Veteran Stand Down has served eight hundred and twenty-three veterans in the Uba Sutter area, ages ranging from nineteen to twenty-three. The Uba Sutter Veteran Stand Down has more than twenty-eight hundred volunteers from all walks of life, and that, uh, that makes, uh, that makes the stand down happen. I've been part of that, uh, for most of, uh, twelve years. I've missed two years of being down there, but, uh, what a phenomenal job they have done. So now, I would like to have all the veterans in the audience to stand and come forward and, uh, turn around and face the audience for the Veterans Day Proclamation. So if you're a veteran, please come forward. I will hand this, uh, proclamation specifically to Mike and, uh, Mr. Bull, if you want to, grab a corner, but you can. I'm just messing with these guys. Being ornery with them. Uh, Veterans Day is November the eleventh, the anniversary of the ending of the war, uh, World War One. By paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by, uh, rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace, throughout the history of our nation, our men and women in uniform have risked their lives to protect the interests of our country and defend our freedom. Uba City citizens live in freedom because of the contributions and sacrifices made by those who have served and by those who continue to serve. Uba City is honored to be the home of about forty-eight hundred veterans, just a little over that. On this Veterans Day, Uba City remembers that we are forever indebted to the service members who have fought and died in defense of our country. Now therefore be it resolved, I Stanley Cleveland Junior, Mayor of the City of Uba City and on behalf of the entire City Council, do recognize November eleventh, two thousand seventeen as Veterans Day, and I call this observance to the attention to all Uba City citizens. And one of my sons is actually in the Air Force, as they know, and also you probably know my grandson is Civil Air Patrol, uh, Second Lieutenant working for First, so, uh, there is a, an emotional connection for me on this. But other than that, thank you, Mike.
Just what I've always wanted. This, uh, as they talk about the stand down, the stand down is not a, a single person doing a job. There is, as he said, the twenty-eight hundred volunteers, service providers, and all the others, hey, say, people in the city that, uh, provide aid us with this, also with the government. Uh, we've been asked to share our model of our stand down with other, uh, states, uh, and for those of you who don't know, this small town has the second largest stand down in the Western United States, second only to LA County, who cuts off theirs at two thousand, and we're vastly gonna approach that. As you said, there's forty-eight hundred veterans in the city, so even the thousand that we have is just a drop in the bucket. So we would like the rest of the veterans and active duty personnel in our area to attend the stand down, find out what benefits and what's out there for them, and the number of services that are actually out there for them prior to them actually needing them. And I'd like to thank the City of Uba City and the City Council for this award and for recognizing all the veterans in our area. Thank you.
I know most of them left, but, um, I remember, uh, twelve years ago and actually up until about four or five years ago, the huge, um, unmet need that was still out there because, uh, there were just so many that hadn't, uh, I guess I'm gonna call it come out of the weeds, and, uh, uh, the fact is, is that, um, as they said, second largest in the West Coast, and, um, our veterans, um, are so much, in our community, so much the better for it, uh, their efforts, very much appreciated. Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, public hearing, uh, zone code amendments to prohibit outdoor cultivation of cannabis for personal use or prohibit commercial activity related to cannabis. Ready?
Mayor, City Council Members, Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Department. The item before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the city's municipal code specifically regulating the cultivation of marijuana and then also the commercial activities related to marijuana. In a nutshell, the ordinance itself, um, it consolidates a lot of the city's existing regulations, which are currently housed in two different sections of the municipal code, and at the same time, it's also proposing new regulations pursuant to some of the Senate bills, the assembly bills that, that were recently adopted, which I'll go through very quickly. So it's simply for the benefit of both the council and community members, uh, to, to provide some context in terms of where the city's been, where the state's been, and in terms of where the existing regulations at the state level lie today. So going back to nineteen ninety-six, the city first passed the Compassionate Use Act, and what that did is largely decriminalized the use of marijuana for medicinal purposes. Uh, a couple of years thereafter, the state approved the Medical Marijuana Program Act. However, at that time, the, uh, the courts had indicated that at that time, there was still local, uh, jurisdiction or local purview over how those regulations were gonna be applied, so at the state level they were permitted, however, it still granted a local discretion in terms of if local jurisdictions would allow it or not allow it. Fast forward a couple of years later, the city, um, took, uh, the very first action relative to, uh, to marijuana, where the city prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries. That current regulation is still on the books today, so the city currently does not allow any, uh, dispensaries in terms of medical marijuana. Fast forward to twenty thirteen, the city adopted an ordinance which, which allowed some cultivation of medical marijuana at private residences, which therefore it was only for personal use, not necessarily commercial use, so no sale of marijuana. Uh, fast forward again to twenty fifteen, the state of California approved the Medical Cannabis Regulation Safety Act, and that outlined some conditions for the sale, storage, transportation, and distribution and packaging of medical marijuana. Then, um, fast forward a couple of, about a year or so, uh, to Proposition sixty-four. Proposition sixty-four, um, commonly referred to as the Control, Regulating, Tax, Adult Use of Marijuana Act, uh, applied to both medical and recreational marijuana, and one of the things that that ordinance did is it stayed at the state level, said, local jurisdictions, you now have to allow a minimum of six plants of cultivation for either recreational or for medicinal purposes, um, and local jurisdictions, you cannot regulate that, however, at the local level, you can regulate indoor versus outdoor cultivation. In response to that, the city adopted an interim emergency ordinance in April of twenty seventeen that stated that, um, that the city would allow indoor cultivation only, however, no outdoor cultivation, and, and again, this is only for personal or med, or medicinal use at a private residence, again, non, for, for non-commercial activity. So again, the city did not allow the sale of marijuana. Fast forward a couple of months, actually about a month or so, um, in May of twenty seventeen, the city extended that, that interim, uh, urgency ordinance. That ordinance is set to sunset on June the second of twenty eighteen, so if the City Council were not to take action before that, and quite frankly, we have plenty of time, that ordinance itself would sunset, and then the city's regulations would fall back to the state of California, which would take effect January first of twenty eighteen. So today, our code again, uh, narrowly defines medical marijuana. We do not allow medical marijuana dispensaries. We only allow indoor cultivation for medical or for recreational use at a residence, and then ours, our, our, our codes are silent in regards to everything else. And that brings us to today. So one of the challenges with that is pursuant to Senate Bill ninety-four, which was approved in, uh, in June of this year. So, uh, so Senate Bill ninety-four, what it did is it consolidated all of the regulations at the state level, including Proposition sixty-four. So Senate Bill ninety-four is the latest set of regulations at the state level, and it simply consolidated all the previous actions, all, all the previous Senate bills or Assembly bills that were approved. And so one of the things that it did do is it re-termed or reconed the term marijuana, so now it's commonly referred to as cannabis, and it also, um, identified different regulations in terms of delivery, packaging, sales for both recreational or for medicinal purposes. So in terms of the ordinance itself, again, staff is proposing that we relocate existing regulations simply for indoor cultivation to a new section in the city's municipal code. There are absolutely no changes in terms of what the existing regulations are today when the interim emergency ordinance was adopted, so again, they're, they, they're basically a mayor of the existing regulations, with the exception, the term marijuana has been replaced with the term cannabis, so there's absolutely no modifications to that section of, of the ordinance. So, so simply to recap, the city has to allow the cultivation of marijuana up to six plants at any private residence, however, our code states it has to occur indoors, not outdoors. Pursuant to Senate Bill ninety-four, we're permitted to do that. And in terms of new regulations, staff is proposing that the city prohibit all commercial cannabis activity. That includes commercial cultivation, the sale of, of any form of marijuana for either medicinal or for recreational purposes, the delivery of marijuana, the processing, manufacturing, or the testing of marijuana. So again, there would be absolutely no commercial activity permitted within the city limits. There is one exception, though, to that, um, and again, this is simply pursuant to Senate Bill ninety-four. Pursuant to Senate Bill ninety-four, the city has to have a pass-through clause, which, which allows licensed delivery services to pass through the city if they're going or if they're en route from one location or one community that does allow the, the delivery of marijuana to another community that allows the delivery of marijuana. So in other words, they simply have to have the ability to, to use the city's roadways. That does not imply or does not mean that they have the ability to stop and deliver marijuana within the city limits. So again, that's pursuant to Senate Bill ninety-four. So with that being said, staff recommends that the City Council concur that the determination that the tax amendment does not constitute a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, and this evening we're introducing an ordinance, again, regulating, um, all cannabis uses within the city, and we're requesting that the City Council this evening waive the first reading. That concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions and comments from the council at this time?
Through the mayor.
Yes, uh.
So the, one of the questions I have is, are, are we able to permit, uh, or, or issue permits so we know where, uh, grow sites are on indoor, and those regulations for indoor grows are the same as what we've already had on the books to include, uh, filtered systems and everything else? Am I correct?
Correct.
So, so they would still have to obtain a permit to grow at specific sites?
Yes, correct. So any person that's gonna cultivate at a residence indoors still has to register with the city, and it still has to be ventilated, and there's also maximum of six plants.
And then, uh, on the state level, um, this is a, all of the cannabis activity on a commercial basis is totally a, uh, cash, uh, based system, am I correct?
Correct.
The banking institutions, because of federal law, don't allow them to accept, uh, funds through normal banking, um, or regulated banking institutions?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other?
Yeah.
Through the mayor?
Arnold, this is gonna be on the, uh, outside. We have zero tolerance, as you said, um, had a few, uh, folks call me and stuff like that. What happens when we get a, when you receive a phone call, people are growing outside? What's your proper protocol? What do you do?
So the proper protocol is that that goes to the top of the stack of code complaints, and we immediately go out to those sites, we try to establish contact with the tenant of the property. The vast majority of times, we are successful. For some reason, if we're not successful, then we, we do is we send a certified letter to the property owner, um, and then at that point, and once we establish contact, we ask them to eradicate the marijuana on site. So to date, I can't give you the, the precise number of how many we've done this year, I'm gonna say probably over half a dozen, um, and then we ask them, to date, I will say that we've gotten one hundred percent voluntary compliance by the alleged perpetrators or the growers.
How, how much time do you give them from the, from, once you receive the complaint you got, how much time do you give them to clean up?
We, we've given people up to five or six days. It, it's challenging at times, sometimes it takes us a day or two to establish contact, um, so from the initial contact, sometimes it could take a couple of days, however, we've also done it within twenty-four hours.
Alex, and I'll have another one for you. Um, we have zero tolerance, outdoor growth, zero.
Correct.
So is there any way that we could throw something in there, once we show up, we take it, and then we, uh, give them a little fine on top of that for our services to, you know, pay for our, uh, manpower in order to do this? Is there any, this could be thrown in there somehow? We pick it up, we do it immediately, 'cause zero means zero, and there's, uh, I've been receiving a lot of, uh, concerns, and it's, growing season is going right now, and you can smell it throughout the community in certain areas, and I just wanna throw it out there, is there any way when we show up, we can confiscate it on the spot and, uh, and throw a little fine in there on top of that for our time?
We could fine them up to two hundred and fifty dollars per incident. Unfortunately, we cannot go on the property immediately to confiscate it, rather, we would have to go through the court system, and we would have to obtain a warrant to physically go on the property. However, we can fine them up to two hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Per day.
Correct.
Okay. That took care of that. Thank you, Arnold.
Triggered another one for, uh, Councilman Buckland.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rodriguez, the state of California currently, um, is, has gone through a number of iterations of, um, I guess guidelines.
Correct.
From, uh, I believe it's three regulatory agencies that, that are looking at, uh, the cannabis, um, the commercial cannabis side of things. Do you know, uh, when the state of California is going to finalize what those rules and regulations will be? Any, any idea?
So my understanding is that it's gonna be January first of twenty eighteen, um, so any local jurisdiction that does not have established rules on the books, um, it would fall under the purview of the state. I spoke with the state earlier today, um, and they indicated that, that that's their goal, that it's January first, twenty eighteen, and I was also on their website, and that also implies January first, twenty eighteen.
So once again, state bureaucracy moving it at an extremely fast pace to, to build, to help us with land use regulations and other things within the state, so, uh, thank you, that's, that's the only other question I'd had at this time.
We must agree with you on that statement. Tongue-in-cheek, yeah, I get it. Um, thank you very much. With that, uh, there's no more questions or comments at this time. I'd like to, uh, open the public hearing for the zoning code amendments to prohibit outdoor cultivation of cannabis for the personal use and prohibit, uh, commercial activity related to cannabis is now open. Uh, if there are any members of the public who would like to address, uh, the council on this issue, please step up to the podium, state your name, uh, for the record. If there's anybody that would like to do that. Uh, seeing no comment on the issue, gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the, uh, council for, uh, possible action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Move staff's recommendation to concur with the determination that the tax amendment does not constitute a project pursuant to the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, Section fifteen, zero, six, one, subsection B, section three, and also introduce the attached cannabis uses ordinance and waive the first reading.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous action, thank you. Uh, moving on to, uh, number four, uh, general plan amendment, rezone, uh, development plan and mitigated negative declaration to facilitate the development of a The development of a forty-one unit gated apartment on Tharp Road. Approximately five hundred and eighty feet south of Butte House Road. Arnold Rodriguez.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council.
Thank you, Arnoldo.
Um for this item this evening, staff is recommending that this item be continued to November the twenty-first, twenty seventeen hearing. A couple of items came up that we are still in negotiations with the project applicant.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you, Arnoldo, and. See on the twenty-first, or there's a comment from?
No, I was just gonna move the staff's recommendation to continue it to the twenty-first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous decision. Yes, I did have to make you get up there. To make it official. Uh moving on to uh number five. Uh bid opening tree maintenance services presented by Matthew Langley, Parks and Grounds Superintendent.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name's Matt Langley, the Parks and Grounds Superintendent. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the tree maintenance services proposal. Staff's recommendation is to award a contract to Richard Tree Service of Uba City. Not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a one-year citywide. Tree maintenance services on an as-needed basis. The Parks Department oversees approximately twelve thousand city trees. Tree maintenance is vital for the safety of the public and overall health of the trees. So on the left picture, you could see uh we have an issue maintaining a seven-foot. Head clearance for the sidewalk and it's typically fourteen feet over the street. The picture on the right, uh obviously a dead tree that needs to be removed. This is a partial list of locations of work to be performed. The formal bid was opened uh September twentieth, two thousand seventeen. For an on-call contract for tree services. Nine local bidders. Uh were contacted, but yet we only received three proposals. A committee of three staff members independently evaluated and ranked the proposals. For cost, compliance, capability, and references. A Richard Tree Service ranked number one in the RFP process. Staff's recommendation is to award a contract to Richard Tree Service in the amount not to exceed. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year with an option to add additional years. And authorize the city manager to approve the extensions if it's in the best interest of the city. At this time, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Questions, comments from the council members?
Through the mayor.
Councilman Buckler.
Matt, is in this contract, is there anything contained within that contract? Uh that would provide for systemic care of some of the trees that are notoriously aphid-ridden? And and leak onto sidewalks and and so forth, or is this just simply a a branch maintenance? Uh safety?
This is basically just tree maintenance. We already have a contract. Uh with our landscape contractor that actually did a couple hundred injections this year. And reduced our complaints on three-one-one for that exact issue by about ninety-five percent.
Okay, yeah, I think it's great um that that there are things that that are moving forward and certainly the the. The safety, the overall canopy safety and and breakouts that we have. Uh can be prevented through a a rigorous maintenance program. So uh thank you for bringing this to us.
Yes, sir. Um any questions from other council members? Comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Uh do staff's recommendation?
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, seeing it's unanimous, very good. Well, appreciate that. Now we'll move on to uh. Number six Blackburn Tally Field Lighting, uh project award presented by Ben Moody.
Good evening. Yeah, nice to see everybody tonight. Looking a little hairier for suit for some, but looking good. Um so good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The item before you is in regards to Blackburn Tally Park. Uh field lighting. So the item I have before you is in regards to awarding. Phase one of a multi-phase project to uh replace uh the poles and lighting for field one and partially for field two. So currently, if you're familiar with field one, it's it's a long garden highway. Uh there's some. The existing poles that are out there, we're we're running into maintenance issues um with them being so tall. Repairing the lights requires special equipment and and also just long-term energy costs and maintenance. It we it warranted. That we put in the CIP, a multi-phase project to replace the lighting over um a few years. When we looked into the project, we've we found that there is potential to. Have project, total project savings by instead of just replacing one field per year to uh to do a joint pole. Um system where where basically we're putting these two poles in, they're bigger poles, but they'll have lights for both fields. So. So what that's turned into is it's increased our budget for the original phase one. Because we're we're basically doing part of field two with that. And so with that, we knew that the cost was gonna be higher than the original. Estimate that we put in the CIP. And s- and so with the. With that understanding, with that joint pole, we uh we gained you guys' approval um in September to go out to bid. We put it out to bid with a with an engineer's estimate of approximately three hundred and ten thousand, based on input from the um pole supplier. The bids came in, three bids were were received. The low bid was three hundred and forty-eight thousand. So bids were a little higher than anticipated. We looked into it fa- trying to figure out what the costs were reasons. A lot of it had to do with um. Groundwater issues with the pole, with these poles, there's a there's a foundation depth that starts to get into groundwater potentials and then also. Wh- when the supplier gave us that number, you know, what we were looking for for an engineer's estimate, there's also. Uh a scope difference of, hey, we want um, we're not just putting light poles up, we want our fields to be nice when we're done. With not damaged um fields and damaged sprinklers and concrete tore up. So when we put all that scope together, that added to that extra cost. When we analyzed it, uh w- we still feel, staff still feels that the the overall uh savings and maintenance. Long-term energy costs and safety for that still warrants doing the project with um long-term benefits. So with that, um in order to facilitate the costs, we're asking for additional funds be um allocated from. Unallocated general fund monies with anticipation that we would lower next year's or future phases to offset that that fund. So shifting the money from year to year. Uh with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project. Uh I recommend, so with a low bidder being Modesto Executive Electric. With Musco lighting system, staff recommends A through C to facilitate the award and funding.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, I'm looking for action.
Well, the first thing I wanna say is Ben, um Sean leaned over to me and said that he's gonna get a haircut tomorrow, so. Just just to answer your question.
Actually, I did. I forgot I did have one uh kind of question. Uh wasn't there an incident um out at Black Blackburn Tally recently? Yeah, there it is right there. Uh one of them did fall, so uh those. Conditions they're talking about are definitely uh something we need to take care of. Thank you.
And with that, it moves staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, unanimous, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to uh public communication. Uh you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their. The opinions of the group. It looks like we have uh one. Uh member that submitted a re- written request at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. So they will be allowed uh five minutes to speak and that is uh Chad Lizardo. Please go to the podium.
Good e- good evening, council members. Uh I tried to handle this behind closed doors. I tried to uh send you guys emails, file the complaints. Uh in an inappropriate fashion to bring light to my situation. Um I was a police officer with the city of Uba City for. Fifteen-plus years, uh a lieutenant. Um I I was flat-out forced out of the Uba City Police Department. And and I tried to get you guys to look into this, um but nobody wanted to hear what I had to say, okay? Um I was involved in a hostile work environment, working for Lincoln Eden. I reported this to Chief Rob Landon, to city manager Steve Crager. Um I also reported to Natalie Springer. Um I reported these uh this event on June tenth. Two thousand and fifteen. Reported that to Natalie Springer and Jeremy Garcia on on June tenth, two thousand and fifteen. On June fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, I met with Rob Landon and Jeremy Garcia and reported the hostile work environment. Um when no action occurred, I went to city manager Steve Crager. After exchanging several emails and speaking back and forth, and I met with him and explained the hostile work environment as well. Um it would turn out that I was later eventually placed back into that environment and tried by these individuals. Um and forced out of the Uba City Police Department. They left me with one option to retire with stress leave, one option, okay? The complaints against me was insubordination, where I walked in Lincoln's office and told him I was gonna expose him for corruption. Uh quite simply put, that's probably not a rational thing to do at the time. But given the hostile work environment that I reported. Um y- you would think somebody would take that into consideration and not put me back in that environment to be tried by those people. Um it was brought up that I was in a conspiracy with another employee in the building. Uh and that conspiracy led to the DA's office and that I conspired with Amanda Hopper, the the DA herself. Uh to place one of these people on uh a dishonest list. I'm not gonna go into that person's name. Um however, that conspiracy did not pan out for them. The simple fact of this was, at the time. I reported a hostile work environment to these individuals who I trusted to be objective. Who I trusted to protect me and they did not. Not only did they not, Lincoln Eden retired. I was told I no longer had a complaint of the hostile work environment, yet Lincoln Eden was allowed to turn around and file a complaint against me. Brian Baker was also, and he was mentioned in that hostile work environment as well. During that case, I was tried by the same investigator who I gave adverse testimony to. In regard to Rob Landon, Jeremy Garcia, Brian Baker, and Lincoln Eden. That same investigator was then used against me. It's not objective. I've asked you guys to look into it. You guys have failed to look into it. I don't wanna go down a road of conspiracy, but at the time, John, your name was mentioned. Mr. Buckland, your name was mentioned that because the Uba City Police Department or because Lincoln and Brian and Sean could not come after me. Or after Jason Parker, they were gonna come after me. Okay, what everybody has overlooked here is the constant oversight that went on in that building. Jeremy Garcia left in April of two thousand and fifteen, okay? Everything in that building fell on my shoulders. In two thousand and fourteen, an audit came out. In that audit, can I finish that statement? In that audit. It specifically stated that the lieutenant's position needed to be defined. Okay, when I got into that position and Jeremy Garcia left that building, I was left to handle all the responsibilities within that building. There was extreme oversight. Every time Rob Landon left that building, Lincoln and Sean followed him. Tony Tartwazi can attest to that. I was left to handle all the crap within that building and then when they needed a scapegoat, because that building was falling apart and their jobs were probably on the line. I was the fall boy for it. Yet there's no documentation of that hostile work environment ever being reported. I have emails. I have it all. I'm not expecting any from thing from you people. I'm not, to be honest with you. Look, I don't want money. Don't want that. I'm happy with my thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. I'm happy. It's an eighty-thousand-dollar loss. I'm happy with it. I'm content. I've forgiven these people. It's it's hard to hate. I have a hard time hating. I love Rob. I love Jeremy. Hell, I even have a a very soft spot in my heart for Lincoln, okay? But at the time, there was so much more going on. I have a sixty-six-page report that outlines corruption. That outlines oversight.
You need to get me to wrap it up.
Okay. All I'm asking is that you guys finally take a look at this and be objective. Be objective in your approach to it. That's all I'm asking you guys to do, okay? You have managers that you trusted within that building. To do their job and I was thrown under the bus for it. It I I ask you guys, is is it is it is it a an aje- uh what I've told you, was it objective? What you guys have seen in your emails with no response back to me. Do you feel that everything that happened to me was objective? Now I'm giving Kerry Hauck a lot of information here.
You need you need you need to stop. You're probably at six minutes now.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I I appreciate it. I ask that you guys get back to me. If you don't, I just, I'm I'm I have no. I'm on to the next step in this process. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh just wanna reiterate, uh since Mr. Lizardo has threatened litigation. Against the city, that I've advised the mayor and the council not not to make any comments.
Thank you. Okay, um now we'll move on to number eight. Appearance of interest in citizens, uh members of the public may address the city council on items of interest. That are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. And is there anybody that else that wants to make comments? Okay. Um moving on to the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. And can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate uh discussion of these items prior to the time that council. Votes on the mo- uh motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request. Specific specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there any one of a? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Staff's recommendation nine through thirteen.
Thank you. We got a second? Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous vote on this, uh starting off now with uh. Uh let's see here, general items, number fourteen. Competitive procurement of um solid waste recycling and organic material collection services. Presented by uh Steve Crager, city manager. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Um on September fifth, your council approved. Uh retaining the services of Sloan Vescas McAfee to develop a uh an RFP. For a competitive procurement process for solid waste services. That um has been done. In terms of them handling the timeframe. Uh they've assembled a an RFP that is brought before you this evening for consideration. Inclusive as part of that document is a draft franchise agreement. Um there are individuals from Sloan Vescas McAfee here with us this evening, uh specifically um Carissa McAfee. And Sue Vicaro, who are here in the audience. I'll ask Carissa to come up momentarily. And give a brief overview of some of the decision points within that request for.
and give a brief overview of some of the decision points within that request for proposals. I think it's important to note that um that your council has been div- divided as to whether or not to go forward with a negotiation or procurement process, but that said, uh this evening is a very important part of any process. Uh meaning this is the part of the service design of solid waste uh for the future. Uh so no matter what uh someone's perspective might be, you all have a common interest in what that service design will be for the future of Uba City. Uh included in in part of the uh documents are certain new and enhanced services. Uh frankly, some of these services are already provided by our current provider. Uh it's not included in their contract, but Recology has been um always uh there for us and frankly in a time of need. So with that, I'd ask uh Carissa McAfee to come forward to discuss uh some of the decision points and provide you with a a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um I'm Carissa McAfee with Sloan Vasquez McAfee and I'm joined by Sue Vaccaro. Our role in this process is to provide the best information possible and recommendations for your consideration and then to take your direction and move forward and implement the process as directed by the council, and we look forward to doing that. Uh we provide, we've prepared a few slides with some information and then we're prepared to answer any questions that that you might have. We're recommending a residential rate structure that includes a single cart um and then for garbage and one cart for recyclables and one cart for green waste. And then the first additional recyclable cart and the first additional green waste cart would be provided um upon request of the customer at no additional charge. Any additional garbage carts and two or more additional um recyclable or green carts would be provided at an additional rate. There've been a lot of questions about how to right-size carts. What what size carts should we have? Uh when the current contract was put in place, it was during a time when pay-as-you-throw was a very popular and thought to be an effective strategy um where you price according to a a policy versus cost-based pricing. So you have the thirty-two gallon cart be the least costly cart and then hopefully incentivize folks to use that cart and and restrict the amount of weekly refuse they have to thirty-two gallons, otherwise pay a much larger rate for the sixty-four or ninety-six gallon cart. We're recommending moving away from pay-as-you-throw to a ready-for-service type strategy. There's a few reasons for this. First, uh it's been shown over time that pay-as-you-throw hasn't been as effective as as once thought. One of the key issues is the amount of contamination that occurs inside of the recyclable and the green waste carts. There is typically a need for a much larger cart than a thirty-two gallon cart for families. Also, you have events throughout the year where um there may be additional waste and folks just typically don't like to keep garbage or kitchen waste in the garage for a week and wait for the next week to put it into the trash cart when there's room. Typically, it goes wherever the space is available, a green waste cart or recycling cart. The issue with this is that say ten or twenty percent of the customers on route put their trash into a green waste or recycling cart. That can contaminate the entire load. It reduces the value of the recyclables. Sometimes it causes entire loads to be rejected. And over the past few years, there's been a lot of pushback from China, which is the main place where commingled recyclables end up. Um it the Green Wall, the National Sword, these programs are are increasing the um level of scrutiny on the purity of the recyclables. And with that, you see the prices going down um and the costs for processing contaminated recyclables is much higher than for processing those that that don't have trash commingled with them. So we recommend having enough space to accommodate the maximum amount of trash that a family would have on their largest trash week. That'd be during the holidays or um family barbecue or parties or whatever the case may be. It's better to have space left over some weeks of the year, but have adequate space when they need it than on those weeks for the trash to be placed in the recyclable or the green waste container. There is an incremental difference in the cost of carts, say going from a sixty-four to a ninety-six gallon cart. But when those costs are amortized over the term of a ten-year contract, it's pennies difference. That really isn't the cost. The cost is the the actual service of the truck coming out, collecting the the material. Um that's anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the cost. Then you also have the the cost of disposal and folks typically are consistent in what what they produce. Now whether they cram it into a thirty-two gallon volume can, the weight is the same as if they place three or four bags into a ninety-six gallon cart. So for those reasons, we're recommending that the default size be a ninety-six gallon cart and that for those who prefer to have a smaller cart due to size constraints, that they are able to request that, but that there not be a lower rate. Because once you introduce introduce a lower rate, as has been shown um throughout the community, um there's a disproportionate use of the smaller cart that does not match up to the needs um or right-size to the needs of the community. Again, the high-volume weeks, um all the holidays, anytime folks have people over or additional materials, spring cleaning, move-outs, there's there's a lot of reasons why um maybe even just once a month, there's additional waste and you want to make sure that the carts that are on hand accommodate that. That way, the recyclables are clean, they're of value, and they actually count towards diversion. I know there've been some questions about could um could diversion rates actually go backwards? Maybe people won't recycle at all if they have a huge trash cart. Typically, people who recycle continue to recycle. Um what you alleviate is the folks who are placing their trash into the recyclable container. You you get rid of that contamination and you have cleaner loads. Additionally, in the contract that we're recommending and in most contracts, the onus is on the service provider to push for the diversion rate. So if for any reason there was a blip in diversion, it would be on the service provider to provide the outreach, education, et cetera, to ensure that there was an ongoing commitment to diversion in the community. There was also a question about why, um when we're looking at cart rates, why there are two separate rates for residential carts versus commercial carts? Um I I know it's um it's it seems counterintuitive that there be two separate rates, but I I wanted to provide some information about why it's different. The the largest component of cost is getting the truck out there, the truck, the driver, the the time between each stop. When you're dealing with a neighborhood or with residential households, you can do as many, you know, it's like ninety to a hundred and twenty households on average that you can do in an hour. So the cost of that service is distributed among all of those customers. When you have a commercial cart, you know, imagine pulling into one shopping center and then getting out, there's the light, and you have to drive to another you know, tire shop or wherever, there's gonna be at least ten minutes between services. So typically, the maximum amount that you could service you could provide to customers is six different stops. So you're dividing the cost of that hour among six customers versus ninety to a hundred and twenty customers. So that's the the reason that there is a difference. Also, typically, you don't have a reduced rate for additional commercial carts because commercial carts aren't intended, carts aren't intended for commercial customers. Really, if there's more than the need for one cart, you're wanting the customer to go to a weekly bin. Either through property management company or through um right-sizing with with their other services, so that is the rationale for residential carts. This process is truly at the discretion of the city council. The way that the RFP is written, the way that the agreement is written, and the way that the state laws are set up give you the sole ability to decide how you want to award this contract. We've established some evaluation criteria and some weighting um that's designed specifically for this city. And we recommend that this is a good tool that would be used as we bring forward recommendations to you. However, your choice will look at the entire package. Which of these proposers and proposals offer the best value and meet the needs of the rate payers as you see fit? So you will retain the ability throughout this process to select whomever you believe provides services in the best interest of the city. Um this does give us a framework for discussing and comparing the um proposals, and that's important. But um it is truly your process and um you're able to be in the driver's seat throughout. With that said, um this process at this point is really about your input and your direction to the components of the RFP, the weighting of the evaluation, um what what the service is, what service you'd like to see in the city. For those who are participating in this process, the proposers, there's built-in um opportunities for them throughout the process to provide feedback. In fact, there is really three key points where proposers um get to provide feedback. First of all, there's an opportunity to provide to ask questions and for all of the questions to be reviewed and all proposers get all answers to all questions. There may be simple answers to questions. There might be a small change that is considered by the city and so an addenda is is put forward or multiple, um but that's that's one area. The second opportunity for um really proposer input is there's an option for an alternative proposal. So if a a proposer has an idea that's outside of what has been requested in the RFP, they have the opportunity through an alternative proposal to, after responding to what we've asked for, to say, hey, but we have this great idea or we have these great assets or whatever the case may be, and we think this is in the best interest of the city and here's what we can do with them for your consideration. Then the city has the option to consider that or not. It's at the city's discretion. Finally, as part of this process, there's an opportunity for proposers to have um to give input on the agreement. So if there are any um exceptions to what's being asked for in the agreement, they are given actually a word copy of the agreement document and they're able to redline and say, we believe that this would be in the best interest or these are the reasons for such and here's the language that we propose. Again, completely at the city's discretion, whether to consider that change or not. Um I've seen proposers have zero exceptions. I've seen proposers have a hundred exceptions. It just depends on the process and the proposer. And I've seen cities consider one or two changes or cities say, nope, this is this is what we want and this is what we've decided. With all of that said, there's just a significant amount of flexibility because the goal isn't the process. The goal is the outcome, to have the best possible service that you have the ability to choose that and consider all options um once they are put forward. So that's a little bit about the process. And with that, um we're able to take any questions that you may have.
At this time, are there any questions? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just ask uh Ms. McAfee to provide two clarifications to you. Um one is she touched upon the cart size. Uh the staff report set forth a cart size of um sixty-four for the uh gray can and then the ninety-six for the blue and the green. Now those being maximums, people could go lower. The concern of of staff uh is that we don't want people um throw, not recycling. We wanna encourage recycling. Counterpoint that has been presented by Sloan Vasquez, which seems to be fairly compelling is uh even worse is when that one or two people are throwing their garbage into the blue can. You want zero incentive to do that because the high contamination causes problems for a whole load of recycling. So that's one decision point for you to decide whether or not you just say, okay, well, let's do ninety-six across the board. Just to be clear, that's the recommendation of your consultant. Secondly, um staff did receive a a letter, actually I did, uh from uh Mike Leggins from Ecology, who's in the audience this evening. And he touched upon a certain concerns that they have or just observations, quite, you know, comments, observations with regard to the RFP. And I want to, and they also asked for uh the process to be delayed a bit for those um questions to be responded to. And I wanted that also from her uh perspective, handling these processes, we don't do this. That's why we've brought in the professionals, how that might be handled uh as well. So one is more something, pardon me, in your arena with regard to cart size and the other, if you don't mind, I'd ask her to provide that clarification before you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is our opinion that that there's no need to delay. Um the there is a built-in process for considering input from from proposers and that is handled throughout um the RFP process. So um really, this is this is an opportunity for us to receive direction um from the city and um then there will be other opportunities if something's brought forward that's compelling, that you certainly will continue to have the option of um choosing other options.
Any comments on regards to that from council members at this time?
Yeah, through the mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna discuss cart size.
Yes.
Your suggestion uh uh is, you know, the ninety-six sixty-fours and right now, you know, your your standard fee is the way it's set up, but I'm a seventy-five-year-old senior citizen, single, and I don't need a sixty-four yard uh toter. And they have a reduced, they 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 do a reduced rate. They don't give the maximum rate. So why would I wanna give you top dollar for something that I don't need to use when right now I can get a discount when I don't use the same, you know, a large dumpster or excuse me, a toter? I'm not using a large toter. When, why would you suggest that, that you they you're not allowed to give a discount if you use a smaller toter? Especially for senior citizens in the community that are on a fixed income.
Excellent question, and I believe a question that many, many citizens would have. We're changing philosophies. So currently, you're paying a premium for a thirty-two gallon cart. If you look at the comparison with with other cities that are um on a ready-to-serve basis versus a pay-as-you-throw basis. So the majority of your residents are paying for a thirty-two gallon cart. And you may recall back when this contract first started, um the rates had to be adjusted higher because uh a disproportionate number of residents opted to have the thirty-two gallon cart when in reality, it should be a small portion of the residents having a thirty-two gallon cart. But because there was such a a large difference between the rates, the majority of folks selected that thirty-two gallon cart. Now to your point, why should you pay more? There's there's two components. First, we're suggesting moving to a ready-to-serve basis where regardless of the size of cart that you have, you're paying for the the hauler to come out and be ready to serve that size of of cart. The the bulk of the cost is in the service delivery versus the the weight. And the truth is, I know that the weight within the thirty-two gallon volume carts exceeds what is expected. There's more than usually the three tall kitchen bags. Those are the ten gallon bags that are going into um most of the carts in the community. So really, you're you're having the same weight. It's just in a different volume container, a different, a larger size so that you have room for your trash and and it doesn't go in with the recyclables. Now as far as the senior citizen rate, that's a policy decision and there's certainly an opportunity for the council to direct us to um add a senior citizen rate where if you are a certain age or um in other jurisdictions, there's a senior citizen fixed income um rate. So that's certainly something you could consider. However, if you continue with the pay-as-you-throw, you'll continue to have the majority of residents picking the thirty-two gallon and you'll go back to the same system that you have now where the bidders are going to have to propose the rate that they need to cover services for thirty-two gallon. And then you have the issues that are significant with the diversion and that's going to affect um the the value and the ability of a service provider to continue to provide recyclable um services as the laws in China or the regulations in China change. So we wanna get away from the contamination and focus more on the cost of service versus the size of the cart.
Uh actually, on that senior discount, I actually did make a note on that part of the RFP um scope of work. I would like to propose that we add um a a senior discount or fixed in- income due to the amount of garbage that they would provide so that that we can take care of that population as far as our senior citizens on fixed incomes.
I'm actually looking at the uh current low-income senior citizen rates that are on here, so. Anything else from anybody on these two uh main items? Yes, absolutely.
Just a couple of questions, ma'am. Given the opportunity to explain why you're not recommending that the proposers have an opportunity to comment now, all I really heard you say was it's your opinion that they not. Why is that, though?
There's a number of reasons. Um first, this is about what the city is directing versus what the proposers prefer. And each proposer is going to have their own set of objectives that they seek to accomplish. And each proposer is going to have their own set of objectives that they seek to accomplish in having the RFP uh, best match their service abilities. Second, it creates a um, creates a potentially legal problem for you because not all the proposers are here. And in a process, what we want to have is a single opportunity for all proposers to give, to provide questions. And then a single opportunity for us to provide answers to all proposers, so that they all have the answers at the same time and the same opportunity to provide that feedback. So, our process is, it's intended to ensure consistency and to avoid any type of situation where um, some proposers have access to information or have influence and input, and others do not. So it's, that's the, the main reason.
Have we been informed of other proposers who may be out there, or do we, are we aware of any?
We have, we have a list of goodness, eight to ten proposers that we plan to reach out to, to provide the RFP once it is fully approved by, by the council, and to invite them to come to the bidders conference. The bidders conference is mandatory for all proposers because of the complexity of this process and the, the importance of them being here in the city. Um, following that, there's an opportunity for them to provide questions, and then it goes through a, a standardized process so that we can be sure all the answers are accurate, that everyone has the same information. Um, and it, we, we don't want to preclude any potential bidders because the more bidders you have, the the more competitive it is.
Yes. Unless you have another, that just follow, just follow up and.
Just, uh, I just want to emphasize that it no way the validity of Recology's questions, comments, observations remain. They're no less, less valid because they came in now, and in my opinion, if there's any reason why they came in now, it's because we enjoy, enjoy a relationship with Recology, where in my conversations with Mike and with Dave Vaughn, I have said, if you have any question or comments or observations, please offer them. Uh, so if they're not timely, it's because of the solicitation of the city manager and this relationship that we have here locally that we all enjoy. Uh, and I offer the same to recycling industries. Um, so the point that I've heard from uh, Sloan Vasquez McAfee is there's ample time to be able to address their concerns. It's built into the process. So it doesn't, uh, doesn't lessen their concerns. It doesn't give us less time to respond to their concerns. There's still ample opportunity as this process begins, and it also, of course, affords additional opportunity uh, for uh, both recycling industries and Recology to um, add additional questions uh, beyond those that are, have already been raised, so.
So, and we're going to have an opportunity to hear from, I'm assuming, both of them?
Uh, whomever wants to speak to this matter this evening, when you open it up for comment, that's fine.
Alright, I will uh, listen to what they have to say. Some of these things, and yes, we did just get it today, um, really seem to me to be very valid points, and I haven't received anything from recycling industries or Republic, but I've, I've ventured to guess that they may have some at least, if not some of the same, similar. Important things to bring up. And I, I'm, I'm in a hard time wrapping my head around why we can't address them now. So when we have the RFP we agree upon, hopefully eventually, um, when we move forward with the best possible product initially, rather than trying to tack on to it, or erode it as we go through the process. If we can get a, a good, solid product, um, and everybody who, who's aware of, I believe we only have two companies that took the time to be here tonight. Um, if they're all aware of, and you have a list, um, the way I'm thinking, I don't see the harm in waiting three weeks or so before we move forward to get some input from, from uh, another set of professionals from their point of view, um, before we move on. But I will wait until I hear what they have to say. I may have more questions, but thank you.
Through the mayor. Um, in regards to the contract processing, um, it's the first time I've actually seen a draft RFP ask for a scope of work to be conducted in this manner. Um, usually these are, if it's something that we're discussing as far as our scope of work and need to figure out all the details that we want as the city, it usually goes out as a closed RFP. Um, right now, as you indicated, not all the potential bidders are even here to have a say. Usually, that's not how the scope of work is put together. Usually, it's the the city or the business who's looking for an RFP to go out to work out all the details and that be all done. And then it is released as an RFP to the potential bidders, who then go through the process of having um, the meeting to go over any questions regarding that RFP, and then if they continue to pursue forward with a complete bid. So, this is a little different. Um, so I'm, I get what you're saying is this is for our input. Usually, in a scope of work, we're not looking for the bidders' input at this, at this time. So even for this draft to be released in this manner, I'm kind of, I was a little confused when that was done. That's why I was kind of asking, is the draft already out there? So, you might want to explain that because this is a little bit different than the typical bidding pro, competitive bidding process, where the scope of work is not discussed with potential bidders prior to it being released.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, we, uh, this is very different from a typical bid process. Usually because it's the largest contract that any city has, and industry standard practice, and, and in all of the the cities that we've worked with throughout the state, the scope of work, the RFP, is, is released ahead of time because of the amount of input that's required. Um, and uh, because typically, there, there is a need for there to be decisions regarding um, the weighting, the size of the carts, those, those sorts of pieces. And you're, you're correct that um, this does create an opportunity for proposers to ask to offer input. And that always happens. Certainly, every incumbent in every city that I've ever worked in has come to this meeting and, and attempted to make that, that um, occur. Here's, here's the reason why we are, we strongly urge the council to not seek input at this time. And that is because the, the input as, as um, written, I, I've reviewed the, the letter, and those are standard questions that we would get in a typical process where questions are submitted to the consultant. By addressing those now, there's two issues. First, you could end up directing the RFP in the favor of, of those who are asking the questions at this point. Because certainly, um, if changes were made as requested, it'd be in the favor of those asking those questions. Uh, so that's, that's one of the issues. The, the second issue, and this goes into the overall process, because of the complexity of the service, and because this is not a situation where there's five companies local who provide the same service on a regular basis, and they can all come forward with a bid for the same thing. We have to provide flexibility. So, for example, some proposers might have assets local that will allow them to have certain benefits from those assets. Others may not, but they could potentially have different labor agreements, or different um, rates for disposal, et cetera. Each of these players come to the table with their own set of pros and then their own set of cons. And it's up to them to put together the best total package based on what they have, because they don't operate off of the same field. They each have different components. So, the reason that the RFP is structured the way it is, is to allow the flexibility and allow us to look at what's, what's the best that can be offered. That's why all alternate proposals are accepted typically. Someone could come in and say, you know what? You require all new carts, and that's necessary to have an even playing field for apples-to-apples comparison, but um, we ended service in a city two years ago. We have a few hundred thousand sixty-four gallon carts. So we can reduce your rate by X amount if you allow us to use those carts instead of new ones. That's something you might want to consider. There's all, any number of scenarios like that where when we look at the whole package, you're able to say, that's in the best interest. We're not going to be able to say, everyone has the exact same landfill, everyone has the exact same trucks. So that's, there are a lot of complexities and challenges, certainly. Um, but tha, that's the reason why we, and every consultant that is in this um, industry does get council approval in a public process for the RFP, including scope of work. But it is, as you said, very unusual for any other type of bid.
Yes.
Through the mayor. I have, I have just a couple of questions on what can affect rates and um, any input that you may have uh, regarding um, China's campaign on foreign garbage. Um, it's concerning to me because of, we move a tremendous amount of product from the US. Uh, Europe moves quite a bit, so there's going to be uh, potentially some uh, massive flows maybe into some less developed countries that wouldn't build a handle uh, the product coming. Uh, but the ban on plastics uh, from living sources, the unsorted waste paper, um, and then the uh, waste textile materials are basically the three big categories with various subcomponents of, of each one of those. How uh, do you see that affecting rates uh, into now? That, that that ban takes place and is currently being slowly enforced uh, um, in China? How do you see that affecting rates uh, in regard to um, recyclables and what, in a, in a way to be more responsive to that, um, do you see our collection process um, maybe changing uh, over a course of time to build a, to uh, directly respond to those rate changes?
You're absolutely right, that over the next few years, things will change, and they will continue to change as, as regulations from China and other, other countries come through. And then also, as there's new technologies to deal with and use the different materials. This is one of the main reasons why we recommend the larger waste cart. Is so that you can proactively work towards having cleaner recyclables that will be accepted. Um, there was a time in the pay-as-you-throw philosophy where the thought was, if you're, if in doubt, throw it in the cart. Um, just, you know, if there's any chance it could be recyclable, just throw it in. They'll pull it out if it's not. Well, the cost of processing and pulling out items that, that are not, there's not a market for, is very high. And, you know, back in those days when, when pay-as-you-throw was introduced, that's back when cities used to get huge rebates for recycling, or they used to be, um, take a risk on getting monthly or annual payouts for some percentage, maybe fifty percent of the recycling revenue. And then, when the green wall came from China, the, you saw a big dip, and you saw some haulers coming forward saying, uh, you owe us money. We, it's costing us to process. So, um, that didn't work out so well for, for some cities that, that had um, a variable type rate. The way the RFP is, is structured and the way the agreement is set up, the hauler takes the risk for those changes. We're moving away from a cost-plus approach, where if there's changes or regulatory issues or facility issues, where the, the hauler has an opportunity to ask for an increase in their revenue. That is no more with, with this agreement approach. Uh, we are saying to haulers, you know, um, you know what to expect in the recycling uh, industry and what your assets are, and um, your end sources for marketable materials and where they're going and um, who you work with. Even looking at changes in law, um, like AB fifteen ninety-four, where the green waste that is currently, where you can currently use a certain amount of green waste as alternative daily color, cover, or ADC, to cover at the end of the day at the landfill. Currently, that counts as diversion. In twenty twenty, it will no longer count as diversion. We bring that up to say, that's on you, proposer. You can't come back to the city and say, oh, the law changed, or this happened and this is going to cost more. No, they need to figure it out and provide the solutions. Uh, instead, the onus is on them to continue to meet the diversion rate that's required, to provide the services, and to do all of that within an index-based rate adjustment process so that there's no surprises for the city. So that's the, the purpose of that.
So with that, I mean, with your responses, and I, I appreciate um, how you responded to that. Um, but nowhere that I read, um, kind of in this change of philosophy, is any indication where there may be um, to public interest, a uh, partnership between the, the contracting uh, agency, UVA City, and the proposer um, to where we could have some shared responsibility in, in what'll, in what our recyclable uh, process looks like. Um, meaning um, to, to gain a higher compliance uh, you know, in the process within our city. If we're going to take this seriously, that's part of uh, reduction of potential o- ongoing costs for a proposer. So, um, my question would be, why would that be absent, or would it be prudent to possibly consider that uh, in our proposal?
This is a policy decision, and it is certainly one that, that is under your purview. Um, there are um, ordinances that could be put in place to cite contamination. Um, there could be um, any, there could be a requirement that proposers provide X number of staff hours to go out and and conduct education and to monitor um, contamination levels and to address that. Um, you can require as much as you would like, or even say, we'd like to see you hit these benchmarks or these milestones in achieving higher diversion rates. And proposers will come up with a program and um, materials and, and manpower, and ask for, for different support. With each of these steps, there's additional costs. So it comes down to um, your current program meets the requirements and, and takes in all of the um, the different regulations, AB three forty-one, which is commercial recycling, eighteen twenty-six, which is organics, and requires the um, successful implementation of those programs. That's the low-hanging fruit. After that, there's other opportunities for diversion, but the cost is higher, significantly higher, the, the further you go up. Um, it's uh, an inverse type situation. So, uh, you certainly could make requirements. We could, um, we could add uh, additional requests for more comprehensive programs, additional staff time, additional resources. But keeping in mind that each additional um, level of diversion that's obtained will be incrementally smaller because it's, the lower hanging fruit is diminishing, and the cost will, will go up significantly, especially on the commercial side, if you're looking at organics.
So, in, in the larger collection uh, containers, do you see more contamination in an every-other-week uh, pickup for recyclables? Or in the green waste?
The reverse happens of what we're trying to address right now. So instead of there being an issue of not enough space for trash and the trash going into the recyclables container, and in every other week recycling program, you see the additional recyclables. Once the cart is filled, most folks won't set a bag aside and start filling the bag and wait till the next week when their cart's emptied, and then refill the cart. And even those who do, it's this constant uh, battle to get back on track. So you, there's a lot of challenges with that where a lot of folks who are not dedicated to recycling are just going to toss the additional recyclables that could have been clean and recycled into their trash can because it's serviced on a weekly basis. There's also additional factors to the environment, like the additional um, wear and tear on the, on the uh, ground and, and other um, operational issues associated with an every-other-week program. Um, but you will see recyclables that could have been cleanly recycled end up in the trash bins.
Well, and, and it seems surprising to me that, that you could request two blue bins. Um, that's a tremendous amount of recyclable that you could collect over a two-week period of time, and um, your, your collection vehicle will only be going through on a less frequent basis. So, so how does that apply to the equation now?
If, if you have two, say you have two ninety-six gallon blue carts, and you, you fill them up on an every-other-week basis. What happens is that you're doubling the volume of material that goes out to the curb, so the truck has to leave the route almost halfway through because it fills up sooner, and make more trips back and forth. So it actually ends up adding the number, not by a lot, but sometimes an additional truck or an additional route is needed in order to um, break away from the route because it gets filled up sooner. So, it, it's counterintuitive, but logistically, there's actually um, additional costs associated with this program, especially if there's already a mature recycling program. If the very first time recycling's introduced to a community, they've never recycled before, twenty years ago, um, and you start with every other week and you build up, that certainly can work, or you can continue. But to regress from weekly to bi-weekly is operationally challenging and would probably be pushed back But to regress from weekly to biweekly is operationally challenging and would probably be pushed back strongly by CalRecycle because they're looking for weekly programs.
So so with that, there's an assumption that people would be then recycling more. Um in in your assumption, because the numbers of the numbers of the numbers today are not going to change dramatically over a course of of time. So we're collecting in uh our blue is sixty-four now. If we went to ninety-six, uh the volume increases. Um so I'm 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 a little I'm a little off on on why there would be this dramatic um increase when we have actually increased our our volume size to build it to collect more. So do you see the quandary I'm in? Uh it it you know, I'm I'm asking the questions, but all of a sudden now I've got two full ninety-sixes um on the second week and that's probably not going to be the case. It's going to be um my blue bin and a family of of three currently and two dogs. My dogs don't recycle anything except for their except for their dog food cans. I knew that was coming from Jackie. Yeah, but but um the the toter is is maybe half full in in my family. Um average household in in Uba City is probably, you know, somewhere in in the vicinity of of three and four people on average. So you know, I'm I'm looking at uh capacities and and trying to come up with a reasonable uh answer to myself and I and going through the the documents, it's, I mean, it's difficult. It's difficult for me to get to to uh ninety-six gallons. It really is. It's it is becoming maybe a little easier, but but uh initially on off on first two reads of this um and and the hour spent on this, um it's it's a little it's a little hard for me to get there because I'm, you know, again, I'm trying to use kind of what I see. Trucks go by, picking it up. I see how much. I know what my neighbors look like because yeah, we have a shared program in my neighborhood. Um if you go over on one, uh the neighbor shares theirs with you. Uh so that's that's how it how we keep things clean in our neighborhood. But maybe you could just answer briefly that that context.
Can I get a clarification or i- is the concern with the ninety-six gallon waste cart or with the ninety-six gallon recycling carts or all?
They're recycling.
Recycling, okay. Currently, there are some households, in fact, many households, that are placing their excess trash into to the cart. So that's that's one piece of it. I there there's a couple of issues. I actually live in a neighborhood um where we have ninety-six gallon recycling carts that are serviced every other week. And a three person household with cat, but you know, um we we typically will fill up the cart um and then exceed the cart and try, you know, push it down or put the the cardboard boxes to the side. If if we could have an additional cart to yet to have the excess, that would increase the rates because you'd be looking at a lot of additional carts placed out um over, you know, all the different households or or the majority. So there is that cost there. The the other piece is say that, say you have a seventy-five percent volume if you do it weekly. So it'd be hundred and fifty percent volume, so one and a half carts that are put out and placed out on that biweekly basis. So you're gonna have the trash, not the trash, the recycling car- truck fill up two thirds of the way down the current route that it's going. So what takes a lot of time for co- for trucks is not actually the the collection. I mean, they're they're on the the collection route for X amount of time. They fill up, they break away, they go back to transfer station or wherever, and then they come back and resume the route. Is typically how it goes. And typically, you want to set up a route so that, you know, they're doing full loads um and returning. We actually um did, we ran a um study on this region's recycling program, looking to see if an every other week program would work. And it turned out that you'd need one to one and a half additional trucks in order to um handle the breakaways, which is what adds the time. So i- is it major? No. I mean, we're talking about one additional truck and spread out over the cost. It's not it's certainly not a a hill for me to die on. I mean, it's it's not that that major. However, I will say um you would likely get significant pushback from CalRecycle going to every other week.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm familiar with the ex- you know, the expedient collection of of um waste, especially the uh the blue bins. That there was one day I stand curb side wearing a blue jogging suit. I know. Don't don't put this vision in your head. And uh I it was fearful. I was very fearful. The driver was just gonna pick me up and take me out to the out to the dump.
Or empty you out.
I'm sorry. They have meals at the dump and they can call it the dump then. But it's a transfer station when when things are going on. So thank you, Jackie, for correcting me on that. That's all I have.
Questions or comments from others at this time? Yes, if you have some more?
Ma'am, on some of these um things I was reading, and this is just gonna be a basic question, seems we talked about advantages to one proposer over another, but some of them seem to be rather um neutral and um innocuous as far as beneficiary beneficial to a one country over or company over another. For example, where did we or you or whomever come up with the idea of um the maximum distance from city hall to the dump is five miles? Why can't it be six?
That is certainly at the council's discretion. Um that's that is something that
I'm sorry, did I say dump? What did I say?
Transfer facility.
Transfer facility, I'm probably not talking into the mic like um, but anyway.
The intention um, the intention in in all of this, the intention is to serve the city and and the the ratepayers. Currently, the city has the benefit of self hauling and they account free. You account for a certain amount of time that it takes to self haul and that's the benefit. Say um say that there was a service provider that currently has um infrastructure in Sacramento and they have some sort of a plan to take it there and a few years from now, maybe they'll have infrastructure that's closer. What we're asking them to do is to ensure that they are offering some sort of solution that provides the same benefit to the city. So because it would not be reasonable for city staff to self haul to Sacramento. So we're looking to protect the interests of the city. Now, whether that's five miles or ten miles, that's certainly at your discretion. And typically, what would happen is that would be a question. We'd look at it and then we'd be able to announce to all the haulers, this is uh for, you know, item number this, three point two point five. It is now this. And everyone has the same opportunity to look at that and it's uh very eh very common for there to be some some questions and a lot of them are innocuous. There are some that um that are just general and we see those and that's you know, that's that's fine and part of the process, but there is a process and a rationale for the process and the timing and there's plenty of time within the process for those questions to be answered and for all proposers to have the same answer at the same time.
One more question, if I may?
Absolutely.
And uh
We can we can go to midnight. I'm kidding, but you know, whatever it takes.
One more question. Um just talking of plenty of time built in for for feedback from uh proposers. How much time should we move forward today? How much time will they have to get that feedback to us or to you?
So if we were to release, uh we we allow a little bit of time after a council meeting to incorporate the direction of the council and make sure that everything aligns between the documents, et cetera. Um so if we were to release on the tenth, um on the twenty-first would be the pre-proposal meeting. And really, at any point, questions can start coming in. But we have a cutoff for questions on November thirtieth, so that would be the last point in time when questions could come in. Um and then uh we typically, our process typically, because we work on answering the questions throughout, we try and get them back as quickly as possible to to responders. Um we want them to have the best information possible so they can provide the best proposal possible. But we we make a commitment to get all responses by by December seventh. Now, keeping in mind that they'll know that what ninety percent of what they need to do is, and we'll be moving forward on that. Um it allows some time for them, twelve days, for them to incorporate any changes that that might come up at the least. And that's a that's, this is our typical calendar that that we use and all however, it's this again is
That was my next question.
At your discretion. If you were to direct us to um to make some changes and that's what the city preferred and and I understand this is over the holidays as well, so there's um some consideration there. We we will adjust according to your direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm just interested in hearing what the other folks have to say, be their feedback, but thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Dude, I I have I have one more que- dude, I have one more question for you. Um we have a system right now and the earlier you said, you know, we we you have a bigger uh bigger toters. Now you're gonna be using a truck and a half, you know, and stuff like that. Well, we got a system right now that's working. They're doing great. Why if you give them a bigger total, why are they gonna fill it up more? Wouldn't it be exactly the same? Why is it gonna take a truck and a half in order to do the job instead of just doing the same truck? They're just gonna have extra space in order to put stuff in. What for that extra holiday or whatever, because you got your holidays where it's gonna be extra work. There's the right now. Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever, Fourth of July, they're using extra trucks. But the rest of the year, it's a normal day, just like it is today. It's a normal day. If we give them a bigger toter, why do you think they're gonna add more when it's it should be the same?
I I apologize for not being more clear. The extra time would be if it was every other week service. Not for, because as to your exact point, we expect the exact same volume of of waste on a weekly basis, but if it were to be every other week, that's when there'd be more material put out in. So I I apologize for not being clear on that.
I'd tell you right now, I would not want my gray dumpster, my my side of my house for two weeks.
Neither would I.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Okay, I will uh kind of do some of mine here. Uh since you all have moved forward, um personally, um I would not wanna have bi-weekly service of any kind of it, period. Cause the green gets stinky, the uh gray gets stinky. And uh I, while my wife and I do not do a lot of uh recycling because we don't need to, cause we don't buy a lot of stuff to do that. The ninety-six, I understand, for families and stuff, uh they will toss um contamination into the uh recyclable, if their gray is full, if it's a thirty-two or a uh even a sixty-four, they will toss in their thus the contamination levels that we have of over twenty percent uh approaching uh twenty-five percent, at least that's what I was quoted, which is absolutely unacceptable in our community. So something's going wrong. Uh changing the the direction or I mean, the outreach is phenomenal on our community about a right bin uh for the right thing. I mean, it's great. Uh so something is going wrong on that. It's either the people are refusing to recycle or um their bins are full and I can tell you it's probably the bins are full of the thirty-twos because they're allowed to get a thirty-two and they should have a sixty-four for their for the gray. Um you know, it's it's uh cheaper, so they're gonna do that. Uh so there we do need a remedy for that, which would be for me, um I'm I've made it very clear to you and others uh that uh the sixty-four for the gray and I don't care if it's a ninety ninety-six uh for the other two. But I do not want a fourth bin or another bin of anything else, cause I don't know, I don't wanna have it around. I mean, a lot of people don't wanna have the three bins they have now. They'd rather be just tossing it in, cause it's, put it in the corner, it's gone and it's out of the way. So it's taking up more space on their property and they're not gonna like that. So the uh bi-weekly service for me is just i- it's a no-go uh for consideration or even the recycle. This is just my thoughts. Um I've actually spent over one hundred hours on 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 this process. Uh definitions, I've gone over three or four times. I've gone over all kinds of information uh kind of drove s- staff a little crazy on this on questions, but I'm gonna move into some of the things that I actually did have annotated on on some of my thoughts here. Okay, hit that one, see what it does. Okay, um which was the uh sixty-four ninety-six uh ninety-six. Um of course, the senior absolutely need to have that. There was no, and the senior and the uh um lower income uh discount, there would no way I'd ever wanna remove that. I had some other nuances which are my own thoughts. Okay, close that one. Moving on, uh I think there's a collective services agreement or new enhancement items that actually is in the agenda for um for for discussion. Part of it was a contract term, ten-year term with two five-year extension options. I asked why? Why are we going from eight to uh eight uh four-four? And then I was reading on some of the legislation that they do reviews every five years on their legislation. So for me, it made sense to say, well, if legislation is gonna do that every five years, we might might wanna uh be consistent with the five-year review of the legislation that's out there. Um I can't remember, I think uh three forty-one is one of them they're always looking at again to uh increase the diversion rate that we need to do and that's another comment I have on that. See, the default, um I really have trouble with the requesting um additional carts for free. Um I think uh that that could come up later as an as as something later. The change I think that we would make going sixty-four, ninety-six, ninety-six uh with a weekly service would go a long way and with education would go a long ways to remedy um the contamination at this point. Since our community is already one of the um better educated uh on recyclables and uh to to go ahead and uh do the right thing. And then on the commercial customer uh item regarding um having two bins uh being at the at the same price, well, um yes, you're driving to there. They may have two bins at a residence of the same thing. But it's the same situation when you're driving to a commercial, you you'll have the same amount of driving there if you have one. And all you're doing is dumping another. The driving is taken care of in that single one. So if they're gonna have a second one, uh charging the driving uh cost still on there, I I think that's unreasonable. Uh that there should be a discount based upon that. I know the goal is for them to get a regular uh bin size, but um uh they may not utilize all the time that other one. And so to require a bin that would be even higher in cost to them, I I think is unreasonable. Um and I did look at the uh rates that are currently being provided and it would be a higher rate that would be um uh charged to the commercial that would have comparable to bin uh ninety-sixes uh for the next level of uh of a regular um uh roller. That's what I'm gonna call it. I can't remember what it is right now. So I I have trouble with that explanation because uh I went through the math and I went through the stuff on that. Sorry, I just have to go, I'm I ju- I decided to go through this uh to help answer some of this um. Uh the on-call service for illegal dumping is what we're asking for. Um one of the things that would help uh on that is as you go along, we have um uh large or um free pickup for bulky items. Uh this community unfortunately has a a problem like others where people uh they just dump it out somewhere uh and leave it there. If we have a an enhanced uh bulky item, uh which is part of the proposal and ideas enhanced bulky item, uh the probability of them uh leaving it uh in somebody else's yard or at the end of a road uh would would be reduced, we hope. The suggestion is four per year to be allowed. Um I'm just kind of curious where that came from uh on that recommendation. Uh I know that uh when you call in, the one actually isn't, I don't think is enough. I've never thought that it was enough. But uh every time we do something like this, uh the cost, overall cost of the contract goes up, so that has to be passed on somewhere. So I mean, where's the balance in in that? I and and that's gonna be vetted through this process. Uh I did wanna make a special comment here about this process is this way for full transparency. That was one of the requests that everybody had when they were here, when we're doing our policy decisions. Uh this is the transparent process. This is where everybody's gonna be able to get out there and say what they think of the basic What they think of the basic um uh RFP. And so um that's where the transparency and uh and also this is a franchise. So it is a different kind of a process than than it would be on a normal RFP. That's at least, that's what I. What I think is, cause we're gonna be giving out this as a franchise, sole source pretty much, except for um recyclables. Okay, now I'm gonna move on to a couple other items here. Yeah, I'm long-winded, but I spent a hundred hours on this and I'm gonna, gonna get it out. The timeline, yeah, really, the timeline, I I have been concerned about a little bit. Uh but one of our problems is is we're running into the holidays and how do we accommodate that and then go too long or whatever. Um I'm ready for si- you know, recommendations or suggestions from other members here as to whether they think it's adequate. But I will say that we city releases the 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 rough RFP, November tenth. Um then on December seventh, no. November thirtieth, which is twenty days, is the deadline for uh submitting written questions, uh. That right there is a also a part of the time when the. Proposals are gonna be developing, I'm gonna say the easy or simp- uh uh the routine part of a um. A proposal. Then they, when, when it's done, they're gonna be working on that and then. On the more difficult ones, when they need to come back and get their answers, they'll have an opportunity. Uh to adjust whatever they've already worked on with the answers from. Uh answers to the questions they had, so you know, they're gonna have a a longer time than uh to develop it than. If you started fresh on that uh answer days, you're gonna already be working on a lot of it. Not gonna sit, sit on your hands and wait till the answers come back before you start. That would be foolish for any, any business. See what I have on the comment there. Yeah, those are both unchanged timeline. Okay. Okay, that was the cart one. We already got that taken care of. Right now, um there are times when we put out bags for the green waste as an example. Um I'll go three weeks and not do much in the yard and then my fourth week, I will uh fill up my green tote and put twelve bags next to it, which. Makes up for the whole month, but that's because that's, you know, I'm just going through and wiping out the yard. Um so really, I'm getting the value of the four, but all in one week. Uh I'm s- sorry about that, that's not the right way of doing it, yeah, cause it impacts the uh haulers. But uh you know, motivation uh is needed to uh work and get it done. Questioning about the decomposable thirty-two gallon bags being provided perhaps um by um. A proposer to um. Be utilized as the extra, if they ever needed it, would be the thirty-two uh bags. Um and then be divided up into regions or whatever when they would pick those, uh. And then, oh, excuse me, uh but so provision by the provider, that an idea to do that. Uh cause there will be de- easy to decompose instead of the black ones like I use all the time that. They have to empty it out and stack them and that's lots of labor when they can take the green ones. Or light green color, toss them and they boom, it's all shredded up. So we might wanna look at an idea for that. Um and also I'd like to look at doing community special yard cleanup weeks. Um and then uh divide the community into regions and spread out the workload per. Um how would you say, region, and that these people would know through outreach that this is gonna be your day for doing the extra yard work. This is your time to go out there to do that and uh like the first week, second week, third week, fourth week, and these people would know. This is the time and you have a a good standard as to where the workload is actually gonna be. That's just an idea that I thought of. And then of course, the uh why the four pickups of the bulk items annually, that question? Okay, now the mileage uh question that was asked, um I actually did uh the map quest. And started figuring out where the transfer station, if something was gonna happen. And let's say that I live. In the corner of Sandborne and Bog Road. That's right at eleven miles from there to go over to the transfer station. And so uh uh limiting it to five miles doesn't make sense because that would actually. Uh put some, uh an onerous uh situation on a, any provider to have something within, you know, with our contract. So if you were to, I think we need to have closer to a, within a um eleven mile uh radius from. From that, because I mean, and then I just, I hit all the points and stuff and that's the furthest away that I could find. From the transfer station that uh uh that is, we are utilizing cu- currently. So um the eleven mile came up on on those calculations. And then I'm also interested in definitely in a mail-in sharps program and then the call to pick up sharps program. That we've had trouble trying to develop a program for sharps, you know, needles and diabetes and all like that um that people have, they. You know, don't want anybody to be uh vulnerable for that, working at the stations and stuff, uh transfer stations or anything. Uh but a mail-in uh program and or um proposal of a call for pickup program. For sharps. A lot of people with diabetes have a lot of that and medications for people. Also, uh as you stated, um January first, twenty twenty, we're going to be uh. No longer allowed to uh utilize ADC as part of the diversion percentage. And uh also they're talking about or have implemented what I think it's three forty-one, maybe three forty-one that's. Gonna be uh required to do a seventy-five percent diversion. Is uh eh gonna be uh coming into place for certain, I can't remember the items and stuff, but certain categories. So they're going from fifty percent to seventy-five diversion of uh specific items. And with that, um. But specifically on the composting, there's gonna be a lot of composting that's gonna be um. Perhaps thrown as the alternative cover that no credit is. How about a program that would um. Get the farmers involved or some of that could be diverted to farmland or things of that nature, cause so that uh. And then also, since the state of California is no longer um utilizing uh waste, woody waste and green waste for cogeneration. There's gonna be an explosion of that um need in this area, especially with farmers grinding it up and they're just putting it back in the ground and that destroys the ground. For three years, it's it's horrible on uh on the ground on nutrients, three to five years. Cause uh woody waste just rots, it doesn't uh decompose unless you have nitrogen with it. Farmers put nitrogen on, it's just gonna suck it right out of it. Yeah, I know, I have, I have a lot of stuff here. Um I I, but I, a- as you can see, there's a lot involved in this and and we're going to, I'm I'm gonna. Get out of this mode and just say there's a lot of process that I will be getting engaged um with up until the time. When all the comments are going to be available. I can tell you, um recology representatives, I I can tell you, I read this and I said. Yep, that's exactly the same thing that I thought. And almost every single one of them that are in there, I did identify and have an annotated note. On concerns of it not being um equal for everybody. So it's quite obvious that some of these things do need to be adjusted and it's, and they're not just for you, there are others in here that some of them. Uh it's detrimental, like the one I was talking about, five miles and eleven miles. That was detrimental to uh anybody else coming in. So there's a lot of stuff in here that needs to be uh uh worked on over the next few weeks, questions and developments, um. So I will be devoting more time to it and uh hopefully uh we will, in fact, I know we will have a. A a great RF, final RFP when we're done. No, I'm not gonna go to midnight. I will ha- also say one other thing, which um I'm very strong on. Um I brought my own uh bill here from recology. And on this bill, it definitely has, of course, the uh the residential. Normal charge, the twenty-seven, twenty-nine for my home for three months, then regulatory surcharge. Uh from October to December, the NPDS uh solid waste fees. Um and then it has, of course, the balance. Well, there are a significant amount of other fees, which are franchise, road fees. And other things of that nature, which um um. There have been questions as to why the bill is so high and and some of those fees. Are built in or added to that twenty-seven, twenty-nine, which will actually part, are part of that twenty-seven, twenty-nine. That I would like to actually have um line item identified for the co- community to know. What what money the city is getting to put towards its roads. Um and I would like to, that to be a, you know, perhaps a po- that's a policy change probably with the city members and. So I'm putting that as to um which ones would be appropriate and how to do that is something I think we need to do. On a policy um uh issue based on that. Um I know. Staff will have something to say about that, but I just wanted to put that out there.
I'm, I'm not sure how best to proceed. I realize you haven't received public comment yet. Um there have been um perspectives raised. From each of you, some of you more than others. Um and it, and it needs to be something that you as a council, if you s- if you choose. Collectively to amend the RFP as proposed, uh you need to collectively do that. Um because I know each of you have strong individual opinions, but um you're going to need to, after, probably after receiving public input, of course. Get to the point where you're deciding and making decisions on individual amendments and then uh voting on those. Uh because we uh will comment as desired of your counsel, but. Uh we're not necessarily going to amend this RFP based upon the individual comments of the five of you that were raised. And I, I know each of you wouldn't want that either. You'd want that, you you want that to be a collective decision. So just as, that's just a point of clarification. Thank you.
With that, since we are gonna end up having to go into that um a little bit later, um I would like to uh move into a speaker card. Time. David Cunin.
Hello, uh Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's David Cunin. Um our business, I'm the general manager of Recycling Industries and. Our business resides at one forty Epley Drive. As a matter of simple math, Mister Mayor. We received this draft document seventy-two hours ago and somehow you've managed to spend a hundred hours on it. I hope you get some sleep after this.
It's uh, these documents.
I hope you get some sleep, please. We, we value your, your, at your best and when you don't get a lot of sleep, you're not gonna be at your best, so thank you. Yeah, uh in two thousand eleven. The City Council received a presentation by your uh city manager. About the need for a competitive environment and in that presentation. It was clearly articulated that a transfer station would better provide for a competitive environment. Recycling Industries has invested its own dollars at no cost to the ratepayer to that end. And we think that this process um of going out to bid and. And certainly applaud you for getting to this point and 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 our effort has been. Uh to to further that end and provide a competitive environment. We think that if we didn't have a transfer station, really, you know. There'd be no business in having a um a bidding process. To that end, we. We welcome this process, we think it's, it's needed, it's been a long time and. You know, uh as far as some feedback for each of you, I think the timeline is uh is pretty narrow, being that it's Christmas. And there's ex parte language in there. I don't know what that means, but. I can only imagine, I won't be able to say hi to you guys or something like that, I get a little concerned. If I can't say hi at Christmas, golly, you know. Recycling Industries, though, is not a proposer. We're a, we'd be a, an auxiliary site for any proposer to dump at our facility. Um we have some of the entitlements done and we got a few more entitlements left and we hope that. That in our effort to provide something here that's gonna transform the rate, transform the service. And provide a close outlet for everybody can still continue. We think that uh, we think keeping the garbage regional is very important. I don't think exporting garbage outside the region would be the right way or or. We, we, that's why we, we think even with our transfer station, there's still a way for garbage to stay. In town and in the region of going to the recology landfill. So to that end, I I just look forward to what, any input you can put and what we can do to f- further that, so thank you.
Ron Roman.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and council members. Thank you once again for giving us this opportunity to sit up here. And uh give us, give you some of our concerns and some of our uh questions. I have a couple. I've heard several comments tonight about new trucks, new totes, the same fees, weight fees. Uh license fees, dumping fees, but I haven't heard anybody say anything about labor. Okay, there's people co- that mean jobs here. There's forty people that live here in Uba City that work for recology. About forty percent of their business is here. There could be some lost jobs here. Okay, so I've seen in the RFP where it says that they may offer these people jobs. If they meet the requirements that they already have, cause they're doing the work right now. Okay, what I'd like to see. Since the new trucks are gonna cost about the same, the fees are gonna be the same, the taxes are the same, the road fees are sa- are the same. I'd like to see a proposal in there that they have a comparable wage package with these folks as well. They're gonna offer them the job, it shouldn't be a cut in pay. And from what I've heard from some of the other meetings, one of the ways that they can have a lower bid is minimum wage. And that is a distinct difference from bidding on trucks or totes. Or whatever the other, the fees, they're all gonna be the same. So I'd like to see something in there, apples to apples. Like everything else is, that these folks are offered comparable pay for what they're receiving today, if there is a change. So that's what I would like to see. Uh we represent approximately a hundred workers out there right now with operating engineers. So if there's any questions uh regarding that, feel free to call me in our office here in Uba City. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I I would like to make a comment on this, just go ahead and stay there for a moment. Um the area you're speaking of in the scope um. Requested is uh three point six point three on personnel. Um I actually had a note on that. Uh employee benefit compensation comparable to what is uh currently provided. That's the notation I already have here. To go through the process. And then also, on here, it's um three, uh an additional change I would like to have, actually is in here, is three point six point four. And then uh change the, that original one for that to another number. Is comply with AB sixteen sixty-nine California Labor Code. Uh ten seventy through ten seventy-two on hiring existing employees. That is legislative law, that is existing that where they would uh. Uh current provider also would provide current employees hourly rates and benefit package uh. Um commensurate with what's already there and but also to make sure. That the current provider gives out um what they have to make sure. Uh fair competitive bidding process is uh insured for everybody to compete. Uh and that's all part of the, of some of the legislation that's out there now. So that, that compliance, I did uh. Take note that is not in here, that needs to be done. The notation usually is. Uh in, in this, it says comply with all the laws pertaining to all of this and that and the other thing and it's like, no. I I, here's a specific item that uh will ensure at least uh some of what you've said so far. Now to go to the next step and say uh that we would do it as a policy um enforcing. go to the next step and say uh that we would do it as a policy um enforcing uh some of the benefit package um as close to the uh current is um as there is, um we can discuss that later. Um and um then the package would have to be released by um current provider for them to be able to analyze and see if they can still be competitive with a com- uh with a commiser- uh. Come on, get the right word. Anyway, a package that is uh uh competitive or or close to what they are comparable. There it is, phew, comparable package.
In the spirit of apples to apples, I think that's fair.
And that's what part of my notes here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Leggins.
Good evening, Mike Leggins, General Manager of Recology Yuba Sutter, and also a resident of Yuba City. Um I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know we've uh presented a letter to you, and we feel like a lot of those concerns are helping to level the playing field, so to speak, and a lot of it is just designed to uh, you know, maybe save a little bit of time, but we're very interested in the process, and we want to continue to um, you know, be a part of the process, so we appreciate you accepting the letter. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for sending it to us. Okay, um Lisa Avila.
That's a long walk. Hi, Lisa Avila with Republic Services, and we also are very eager to pre- present a proposal and respond to this RFP. Um I think there's been a lot of time put into it already, and it looks like there's gonna be a little bit more time put into the scope of work. Um we do have a little bit of concern over the timeline, and we would like, um we think it would be best to have the bids due at the end of January, and also have thirty days in between the time that city staff sends out all responses to questions, and then the bids are due. So those two two changes in the timeline, we would like to see, but we're really excited to put the bid together.
That would be.
Any questions?
No, that there we need to uh, so where on that timeline specifically, because on the left side is the milestone wording, so where would you, between which one of those and the other would you like to have? Because I know some of them cross over.
So between the December seventh, when the city issues all the responses to the bidders, to the questions that they've had, between that date and the proposal due date should be thirty days.
So that'll be January seventh.
But with the holidays, we think it's more appropriate to have it towards the end of January.
You're not gonna work Christmas? I wouldn't either.
Any questions?
Yep, you do. Salvatore Congilio. Let me know it, because it's it's that's what I see. C O N. G L I O or T O?
Salvatore Cornilio.
Co- oh, there the I.
Salvatori Cornilio.
There is an I next to it, but it's hidden.
The G is silent. So Salvatore Cornilio, Group Manager with Recology. Appreciate the level of detail that the mayor and councils put into this. Uh it's a large contract, right? Um it's a very important piece of the city, the operation of the city. I didn't, my comments were addressed through some of the observations that the mayor and Sean and others had today. Uh we agree with the schedule. Uh we think that's an appropriate schedule. It seems to be pretty standard. Uh just like a few other things that are uh to address some of uh Councilmember Preet's uh concerns earlier about the process, typically we've seen the deal points and scope of services presented to council before releasing the draft RFP. That's the only reason why we wanted to comment on some of the draft, just to get some of our ideas, expertise, a few kind of landmines and things that could potentially impact the rate period in a negative way, but we understand the process and that there's a timeline, and so we're not, you know, we're okay with with how it's going. So um thank you for the opportunity, so.
That's it. I will give one oppor- more opportunity for somebody to come up and speak, address their thoughts. Okay, now I'm gonna bring it back to the council, and we have a few items that that look like they would be policy, and some of them look like um has to do with the timeline. Um. One policy, uh one timeline thing is here, the policy item, and I I missed some of the other items. You guys can help me, council can help me get uh separate out the policy items that we would need and maybe staff. If there's anything um that we need to do policy-wise to make wise to make thing uh changes according to our comments. Uh did you take note on some of those, or?
Uh there there were a lot, and so I'd suggest that if there's anything that um you think that needs to change in the RFP, uh this would be the opportunity, obviously, to raise that. Um the specific thing that I I do ask of you, now, uh the senior rates that were risen, uh Vice Mayor Didball raised, those are in the RFP. I just went back and checked in the um draft franchise agreement. That's included in there. Um there's the the cart size matter, just to confirm whether or not you'd like to go with a sixty-four or ninety-six gray can, uh or some variation on the other cans, too. That that's a decision point for you. Um the timeline, of course, and then the two other things that I have written down um are the uh second cart for commercial uh that uh Sloan Vazquez offered one perspective, and the mayor offered a different one, uh so absent any direction from the council, otherwise it would remain in the RFP, where uh it's an incremental cost of carts in order to um um, you know, not encourage carts at commercial, multiple carts at commercial areas. And then the other is the the decomposable uh bags, um which, you know, that's something, of course, Sloan Vazquez could comment on. It might be problematic just in terms of the cost of service. Uh it might increase the cost of service to folks, is would be uh initial thought. Um beyond those, I I do not have others written down.
Before we move on there on the disposable bags, there's already um a three dollars and ninety cent ninety-five cent charge, I think, per bag. Actually, he's in there, but it is not exercised, I think, very often, uh probably because uh most people uh don't um do it the way I do it. Because of that, but um I know that there is a charge on that chart of about three ninety-five per bag, uh that is thirty-two gallon that is set out. Okay, everybody else? Go ahead.
I read um a- as I looked at at the rate part to this, um I don't recall anything regarding low income uh being in there. It it's in there? Those.
Sorry, it's yeah, it's senior uh senior and low income, not just low incomes, sir.
That's exactly the the direction that I was going to suggest is uh even combining all of that into an income level, not by age uh category, uh because there are many seniors in our community uh that are uh rather well-to-do, and this is not something where they've already paid their dues. Um this is a an ongoing uh use of facilities, and and I think that if they have the ability to pay, they should pay and and not be uh given a a price break just because of age. Um it should be in in income level. So that's probably where.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, it is a eight point three low-income senior citizen maximum service rate, so it is the two combined.
And and I appreciate that, because at some point, uh my eyes have crossed uh a number of times while or reading this. Um I don't have a hundred hours into it, but but I certainly um have fallen asleep twice in in the attempt to digest it. Additionally, and and I'd like um to have this added for consideration, is uh citing a local transfer station on this side of the of uh the Feather River within a sphere of Yuba City's influence uh to build a to uh take our local uh trash in and and begin the initial uh process. It doesn't need to be immediate, but there we could certainly talk about a timeframe uh that would allow a proposer uh to build a site something um on this side for the ongoing process. Um I think it's critical um that if we do that, um that there be some flow control um measures put in place for that. And um I think another discussion point, and and that would be the the timeline, um looking at uh how we move forward, and maybe some extensions in there, not going against what um the consultants have have provided, uh but certainly trying to be uh aware of of how much goes on in our community during the holidays, um and and certainly an attempt um to be as fair and open and as transparent as we possibly can through the process.
Sir, with regard to the local transfer station, um something that your council can have a discussion on, would it be something that you'd want to provide um direction in the RFP where you maybe state that, you know, that it would be looked upon beneficially uh for people to propose a local transfer station, or would it be more, or you're thinking more of an absolute?
We could probably uh utilize more information from Sloan Vazquez uh directly to that subject matter, but in my estimation, it would be um it would provide on the on the long-term uh better rate uh solutions for our community to build to have something local uh that that our trips would be reduced in distance and time, and and therefore collection would be uh more efficient, and that's just, again, from from a councilman's perspective, um and and knowing how far uh some of these vehicles have to travel, the type of vi- or tri- type of traffic they have to travel in, and just simply trying to cut down uh miles traveled through the process of collection. So I would like to see it be something that that is fairly concrete in a timeframe that would allow uh for the process for any proposer uh to probably come in and and take a look at it. I know a number of the, I mean, currently, uh not not to speak for recology, but they've looked at at locations, possible locations. Um Republic has indicated they've looked at at different locations, and certainly we have um someone else in the room that currently operates uh a like facility. So.
Okay, uh I guess depending upon the the complete list, uh maybe it would be best for us to come back at another time. Um it frankly probably would be December by the time we are able to um have all these questions addressed adequately, because I don't want to just do it. I mean, just because as as we're moving forward, we're uh our next meeting's two weeks away, and then we're into the month of uh month of December, and that's not meant to persuade or dissuade. That's just a matter of fact. Um but I I do want to make sure we adequately respond to your concerns.
So you're just trying to put the onus on the new mayor to have to run the.
Yeah, happy birthday. That's right.
Well, that's right.
You know, I I was not thinking of that, sir, now that you've gotten me into trouble. But uh but, you know, we can certainly do that. Uh, you know, there's 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 time available. I don't want you to push you through this process. Um, yeah, I mean, either that, you know, my time's your time. We can stay here as uh for the time, and we have representatives from Sloan Vazquez. We can address it now, whatever is the pleasure of your council.
What is the pleasure of the council on this? And so so what would be the basic um final proposal and uh idea, setting up uh within a certain timeline or a fixed um the goal would be to have a fixed transfer station within the sphere of influence of Yuba City?
I mean, that would be the, conceptually, that would be the the best. Um and there could be one of two ways that that could go, and that would be um that the proposer would would build, would permit, build and and cite that uh or cite, permit and build uh that facility. Um that that would be one uh thing. That would just take time. Um secondarily would be uh to utilize existing facilities uh in the uh intermediate period of time, um or just simply looking um over the course of of the contract, um being able to have a a facility here that then at the end of twenty, twenty-five years could be turned over, lock, stock and barrel to the city of Yuba City, not that we necessarily, and that's a uh certainly everyone's um decision point on this council, um that we could end up being the the owner of that property, not that I necessarily want to be the owner of a transfer station.
Don't.
I didn't say that.
Uh, just to the mayor.
Yes.
Okay, Arnaldo, I'm gonna ask you this, because they're talking they'd like to have a transfer station in the s- in the sphere of the city. Do we have any property at this time where that is possible, or in the future? Is there anything lined up in the future where we could have something like that in the sphere of the city influence?
Um mayor, city council members, we in theory could. However, it all depends on the exact location. Um I think it would be speculative at this time to state that that there's one ideal location over another. Um as long as the zoning code permits it, then obviously we would have to go through the process, uh the proper entitlement process, which is more than likely gonna be a conditional use permit or a use permit, and then also we have to go through the proper um procedures pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. There are different levels of SEQA review. The most intense or the most thorough review is obviously an um an environmental impact report. The second one would be a some form of negative declaration, and the third being a cat exempt. Um any transfer station is probably gonna require a very thorough review in terms of uh in terms of SEQA to ensure that any environmental impacts or uh potential environmental impacts are thoroughly assessed. So with so with that being said, the short of it is, yes, there are locations. Um however, any location's gonna have to be thoroughly reviewed, and we'll have to review it upon the merits of the project and its specific location.
And one more, Arnaldo, I won't hold you to it, but what kind of timeframe we looking at?
It largely depends on the exact location and the environmental um and the environmental process. Any environmental impact report pursuant to SEQA can easily take between twelve and sixteen months. Um any EIR would be uh, we would commission uh or we would go out to bid for was, so we would go through the RFP process. Um we would have to retain the services of a professional environmental, you know, uh either an environmental uh firm or a planning firm that specializes in EIRs. Um quite frankly, we don't have the expertise when it comes to transfer stations in uh transfer stations in-house. They are um they're extremely detail-oriented. There's a lot of analysis that has to go into it, and uh for that reason, we would suggest that we go out to an outside firm to assist us to well with that process.
And last question, would this be the cost of the person that's gonna win the bid here in the near future? Would this be the cost of the city doing all this process, going through this to get to the tour we need to have a transfer sta- station put in the community? Would these costs be on the whoever gets the bid, or would this be us?
That would be the cost in in terms of whoever applies. Um the cost for the preparation would be borne by an applicant, not necessarily the city, and that's in long-term standing with 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 not only Yuba. And that's in long-term standing with, with, with not only Yuba City's standard operating procedures, but to my knowledge, almost every city that I can possibly think of.
Okay. So, more cost on the bill for the taxpayers of the community in the near future if this goes through? If that's what council's asking for?
Perhaps.
If that's what council's asking for?
Perhaps.
Okay.
It all has to do with, if it fits into their ability to lower it, raise it, whatever the services are. It's all up in the air.
Through the mayor. Through the mayor. I think, I think without analysis, it would be unfair for anyone to suggest it would increase rates when in fact, it could have just the opposite effect. And we would need to see some of the study material that Sloan-Vasquez could provide to us to be able to make a qualified determination of what that would be on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, councilman, that was, that was better. Okay, any other items the staff has? That would be, he would, you identified?
This is your opportunity. I mean, I, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, you, like I said, you, you need to propose amendments, vote on those amendments, or go with what you've got, or preferably, maybe have a study session, if you want to have a study session on this. The reason it's structured in the way it is is because this RFP as designed gives the flexibility to the proposers to design the services in the way they see fit. That said, if there's a policy decision of your council, which is rightful of your council to make, that says, no, we'd, we'd like to see a transfer station within the city, you can absolutely do that. And like I said, I, I, Chris, if you, please, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and commenting, if you feel that it would, you'd need more time to develop that analysis, to understand the cost implications. I, I'm not asking you to just provide a snappy answer, thank you.
Yes, sir. As the city manager said, the, the RFP is structured in such a way for any proposer to come forward with their best proposal in service of the city that they believe would meet the city's needs in service, price, environmental impact, et cetera. We typically do not, we are not typically very prescriptive because each proposer has different assets. And if we are too prescriptive, we can eliminate opportunities for those proposers to come forward and participate. So, we typically want to include as many proposers as possible so that we can see those solutions and truly understand what's, what's in the best interest of the city. In other words, if, if we were to put very tight parameters on a certain area, you may only have two proposers that are qualified, that limits the field. So, we tend to allow more room for those creative solutions. And sometimes, they do provide cost savings or provide a solution we hadn't realized was even available yet. However, if, if the council were to want to see the impacts of having some sort of requirement for the citing of, of a facility in a certain area, or the design-build option with the, the city taking it, that would require some additional analysis and, and an understanding of, of impacts. So we, we would need to go back and, and conduct some analysis research and come back to you with that information.
A question here then to the council. Or comment, so this would be, if we were to include that the bidders could present, or whoever is going to be doing proposals, a, placing a transfer station within the city limits as part, and within a certain timeline, that would need a policy decision to, by this council, to allow that or encourage, or not get in the way of that type of a proposal, is that correct? I'm just wondering, is that, would that would be a policy decision on our part? Since typically, we don't encourage stations like that, but then we don't typically discourage it, but we'd have to make it to where?
I'm sorry, if you could just restate it, I just didn't catch everything you said.
Yeah, because it's going up there right now still. So currently, we're, we don't encourage transfer stations within the SOI. But this would be actually a policy change by the council giving staff direction to, what would be the terminology? Encourage it to be done through the process?
I, if, if.
How would I put that?
You could do that. Yeah, I mean, you could say that you could, if you put requirements in there to that extent, I'd want you to at least know the financial implications of it.
Right. Which would be the analysis that we would?
It, it would. Or you can just, you know, include it as an option and say, you know, we'd like to see, include it as part of it, the option of putting a transfer station. And, you know, put frankly, the onus on the bidders.
And that's where I was trying to get to.
Okay, there you go.
Was put it onto them to, if they think they can do better with doing that, within a certain length of years to get it in there, put it on them to present that.
That's certainly an option.
We would hold their feet of the fire on that very strongly. So I, I don't know, that's kind of a risky proposition too.
Is that something Ms. McAfee that's doable? Or would you prefer another approach from your experience?
We frequently include language that says the council is interested in X solution. Or proposers are encouraged to provide a solution for, for X. Or you could say it would be favorably looked upon, or you could just leave it neutral, saying we'd be interested in, in seeing that. And that way, you have the opportunity to understand the impact on the rates that that action would take. And then make a decision from there, deciding if that impact, positive or negative, is, is one that you want to move forward with. There are a lot of open questions here. However, the RFP is structured in such a way to allow for all of these questions to be responded to, if possible, by each proposer, by them putting their best foot forward. And then once all of their best proposals are on the table, you would have the opportunity, say, if one proposer offered a solution that your preferred proposer, that, that, the, the proposer you were selecting did not at negotiations, we could say, the council's interested in this and it was offered at that, we'd like for you to include this. This is truly a negotiation procurement versus a bid. There's a lot of flexibility built in so that you can, so that you don't have to forecast into the future every possibility. You can see what's available and then decide how you'd like to move forward.
Thank you.
With that being said, in the proposals, can we, you spoke about an alternate method as well. So can we ask for the proposal of one including that as, as an alternate way? So that they can bid two different ways? In the same bid process to say, this is how it would be as existing, but if we were to use this transfer station, or five years from now, this is the other option, these are what the rates would be?
You certainly could do that. You may receive a question from some proposers saying, if I'm unable to provide that second or alternate, am I still allowed to be responsive to the, you know, initial? And, you know, again, typically, we, we like to see as many options as, as possible. But you, you certainly could do that if, if, if you were to prefer.
But with the terminology to say the desirable way would be this way. So when we look at our criteria, we can add the points towards those that we get the bids with the desirable way.
And with that said, each of the attorneys for each of the proposers are going to put ironclad language in, saying that they have very little control over the SEQA process, over the permitting process. I, I can think of a city right now that a building was contractually supposed to be built like three years ago, and it's still not up and running because of delays. So, there would be a lot of back and forth there to ensure that they weren't held to something that they did not have full control over.
Right, right.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, I don't know, make a motion, I don't know about make a motion or whatever, a suggestion? Then we'll see if it goes to a motion. We have a lot of amendments on here. I don't think everybody kept track of everything. I'd like to make a suggestion that we have a study session, get all of our questions answered, our amendments done, and get this wrote up and have it done. And maybe come back the second meeting in January and try this all over again with, with all the changes and then go onward from there. Well, the amendments that we have, because we have a whole bunch of amendments, we all have changes that we would like to bring. I mean, it's the holiday season. The first meeting in December is a holiday for us, more or less. I mean, it's been a year, what's another month?
It has to do with the timing of somebody being able to fulfill the requirements that will be put upon them. Another month is, is.
Well, we'd have to change that up there also, I mean.
No, the end, the end of the contract is the end of the contract. So they have to have time to be able to develop their services.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
My personal preference is I'm not interested in a study session. What I'm interested in is being able to move this process to where the proposers can have this in hand with a reasonable period of time in which to conduct their business and put together the best rate package and services for our community. I am interested in seeing if we can have some of our answers, or have some of the answers that we've asked for tonight, and possibly come back at our very next council meeting. And with the goal of setting a, a new set timeline with some of the concerns that have been raised by various interested parties, doing some modification to the, to open that timeline just a little bit in that January schedule, but trying to stay as close as we can to the, to the current timeline. Again, with, with some openings in that. And we should be prepared at that meeting to set forth policy based on discussions tonight. And build to, to come to a resolution in which they can work with.
Okay, I, I think I understand what's being said here. So we would, our next meeting, which is the 20? First, we would have this come back to us with the policy items that we have, or the items that we have that would take a policy decision by this body. And then the RFP would go out with those policy modifications. And also some of the RFP modifications that we have discussed and maybe hopefully have clarified what they actually are. So.
Yeah, and, and then a slight change in the timeline that would open up the center of that timeline by an additional two weeks. So, that, that was being kind of asked for across the board. But that would, that would also give an additional roughly 28 days or so into the whole process.
December 7th, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, but December 7th's not a meeting. More than, are we going to have a meeting? I mean, we're having a meeting, but are we going to have a?
That's staff response, we don't.
Oh.
Right.
That has to do, right, this time, so. And we can call a special meeting if we wish for that.
Sure, put it back on the new, on the new incoming mayor.
Sorry, mayor.
Well, through the mayor, I, I kind of jotted down some new timelines just to make it a couple of weeks difference.
Deleted mine.
So, if we, if we go with the November 21st meeting, come back with strong proposals and with the feedback that we received tonight. City releases the RFP then November 29th. Then the RSVP for deadline for pre-proposal meeting would be December 7th. Mandatory meeting would be December 14th. Deadline for written questions, December 27th, or somewhere around that week.
Now, city hall's closed for a week between Christmas and New Year's.
So we can do January 5th.
Okay.
January, we can have that meeting. Traditionally, that first meeting in January is canceled if you're talking about a council meeting.
No, this would be a Thursday, actually. January 5th would be like a Thursday. Their questions, yeah.
Yeah, to answer their questions.
And then from there, we can go, what, another two weeks or so, right? To review those?
We were usually doing, on our timeline, it was 10 days to review, pretty much 10 days.
Yeah. So if we do the 5th of January, then it would be the 15th, would be the city will issue in response written questions by January 15th. And then have proposals due by the first part of February, that first week.
Sometime, so what, what day would be?
So either February 2nd, February 5th, 6th, somewhere there. If you want to make it a Tuesday, it would be a February 6th.
So which one are you on that? Proposals by 4:00 PM on?
February 6th is what you're saying.
February 6th.
Do we have somebody writing all this down, Steve?
I got it all right here, man.
It's just proposed dates, so if everybody's okay with that, we can go. And then from the February 6th, then it would be the city request clarification for proposal. So give ourselves, what, two weeks?
Uh, that's three weeks according to that thing there.
So, that would be February, so like February 27th?
Yep. And then you got 10 days in between from there?
Yep. And then that would be March?
Well, actually, you got three weeks in between each one.
It would be the second week in March, third week in March or something?
Yeah. And then that would be, say, March 8th?
That would work.
There you go.
That would work, okay.
So we'll certainly.
Dates and numbers, she lives by that.
We'll bring these back for you at your next meeting.
We know the skills that each one of us has.
I live by a day planner.
Yeah. And we, we know, we know that, so. And that's actually close to the one that I deleted, unfortunately, I hit the wrong button on here. So that's a recommendation, is that?
I'd, I'd move the items, move the items as discussed with the timeline amended as been prepared and discussed just previous to this motion.
So just as a point of clarification, in order for us to, you know, the reason I said December before, I can meet November 21st if, and only if, all of the comments are raised on the RFP. What's not going to work well is if we come back in two weeks and I've got answers to all the questions raised this evening, only to find another multiple of questions. And it's okay. And if you need more time to review it, I just want to make sure that when we have that meeting, that staff has adequately responded to the questions and concerns you've raised.
Right.
And so my ask, in order to meet that 21st deadline, is that any concerns that you have that, that are provided either this evening or in short order tomorrow. And I'm sorry to be so blunt about that, but I really want to meet your goal. But I don't want to have a 21st meeting that's not as productive as you deserve, so.
In other words, RFP are to the fire now on that one. Which, we accept that challenge, I do.
And I'll second that motion from Councilman Buckland.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we're going to be bringing this back with hopefully, all the policy and different things that we requested within the RFP. Then it'll be your turn to start tearing the RFP apart. Yeah, well, by, oh, yeah. Happy birthday right here.
Yeah, happy birthday, Preet.
Thank you.
Preet's birthday today. She said no singing though.
Yeah. Yeah, don't need that.
So, Steve, Steve, are we gonna make sure that these folks get the RFP, the new one after the twenty-first? The one, so what we see... Sooner than we gave to them this time?
There'll be no amended RFP. There's no amended RFP. There's just your points that you've raised in responses to them. When the agenda goes out.
Oh, so it's when the agenda goes out. Okay, so that's why seventy-two hours.
I think we're all on the same page as far as what we want in there.
Thank you.
From the discussion that we just had, it's just working right and putting it in right, so...
Shoot, everybody's gone. That cleaned out. The good people are here. Chief?
Okay.
Protect us?
I need to get my computer back open so we can finish this meeting here. Luckily, I have...
That's right, we're not done yet.
Nope, we're not quite done. That one was so hard to...
We started shutting down.
Jump ship and run out of here.
We started shutting down.
Okay. Business from the City Council, abbreviations please, tonight, Councilmember Buckland.
Sean's not back yet.
That's fine. He, he didn't want to listen to me anyway, so... Meetings that I had for the city and, and the different committees, Sutter Animal Services Authority, JPA, we met and looked at a number of, of different enhancements within the, within the, the actual operations and some of the different services that are being provided. I'm not going to go into each and every one of those, but I invite each of you to attend the Sutter Animal Services Authority, JPA meetings on any Monday at one o'clock. There was an attempt to change the times, but, but we're not going to do that. Also attended Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency meeting. There's a number of items in the works to build a complete the West Levy Project south of our community to one-hundred-year flood protection, working with the federal government, trying to advance a, a quick start program through the federal government. We think that we're sitting high on the list because we just missed it last year. There was only one issued last year, but, but out of the funding available, we think we sit in a, in a very good position because of all of the work that has been advanced by Sutter Butte Flood Control in design and, and the levy repair process, and the repair that has occurred in a short ninety-seven days so far on the three reaches that are adjacent to Yuba City. That has pretty much put the Army Corps of Engineers on their ear to understand that we mean business here and we can get things done cheaper than they can. And it looks like the, the project, the reason we didn't get it last time is because it, it had an overestimate of cost, and after we put the, the three reaches together, we're using that as cost estimates for the southern portion, so we think we've, we now line up with the federal requirements. So, it will be great to be able to get that done and finish that so we can then move to the, the other parts of the basin that need help. Attended the, the Mayor's Cup with, with all of the council members, except for Sean, to watch Yuba City defeat River Valley, unfortunately, twenty-nine to twenty-six. My bet was on RV this year, so I came up the big loser. But it was a, for the quarter I saw, that was a tremendous game. If it hadn't been for a couple turnovers, RV won that game hands down. RV, you guys did an awesome job. Attended a CalCOG meeting by phone, and part of what they're doing is, is putting some funding forward to advance a challenge against the opponents of SB one. And I can proudly say for multiple reasons, I voted against the funding of mounting a challenge, partly because of short notice, and second, that the agencies paying are all of the contributing agencies to Secog would, would have a, a large share of that, and I had no input prior to that meeting, but also on the foundational piece that, that I think the voters have a right to choose what their taxes will look like, and if there's a better proposal out there, move forward with it. Attended the Sikh parade. The actual Sikh parade, not all the other festivities ahead of time, unfortunately, but we brought up some staff members from Secog to be able to attend the, the meeting to include the C.E.O., James Corliss, and his family. Enjoyed the tours that we received. We conducted that little tour with Dan Flores and staff from Sutter County, and were able to, to show our visitors a, a very comprehensive look at the, the temple, the temple grounds, the parade, some history to it, and they were grateful for the opportunity to be able to come up and participate. Yesterday, I attended the Government Relations and Public Affairs meeting for Secog. Nothing highly volatile coming out of that, just conducted some routine business and paid some bills. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Councilmember Cardoza, please.
For the few people and everybody at home, we'll start off with chamber events. I only got to go to a couple this few weeks because I had city obligations I had to attend, but I went to the breakfast. And I had, the topic was the state of Billerford Space, what's going on now and in the future. And I was, attended a ribbon cutting for Paladium. They moved, and they got a nice facility, a wonderful thing. For meetings, attended Yuba Sutter Transit Authority meeting, Sutter Animal Services, Sutter Full Housing Committee, Regional Housing Authority, Sutter Buttes Flood Control with the Mayor and John, Economic Development Commission, Planning Commission. Got, I went to the Get Ready for Winter Flood Aware Prepare meeting at the Vets Hall that they had to let us know what's going on with the dam issue, and everything's looking well, knock on wood. Attended the Bye County Homeless Services Authority, JPA, meeting yesterday with council. We attended the emergency preparedness training for elected officials. Now, for community and city events, attended the Board and Commission's Dinner with council, the California Beer and Wine Festival, the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, the twenty-fifth anniversary, Golden Valley Auto Bodies gratitude forgiving card giveaway with Councilman Buckland, the Friends of the N.R.A. event fundraiser dinner. The mayor and I attended a neighborhood watch party, Second Street, B and C Street, hosted by Bob and Lee Jones of the Harkey House, also the Mayor's Cup, the Sister City, got the tens, had some fun with that, did the arrival, closing, and dinner, and Halloween party with council. Last week, I attended the Religious Freedom Conference, the United Way Halloween Spectacular Five K Run, the Thirty-Eighth Annual Sikh Parade with Sean and the mayor and I. We got the honors of walking in the parade, got to see the latter half of the fireworks. They said nine o'clock. Thank God I got there at eight fifteen. I got to see the tail end of it, and then the Seminar of Life with the Sikh, Sikh Way of Life, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Very much. Moving on to Councilmember Harris. You worked, right?
I worked.
All these events, that's pretty much...
It's been a busy, busy final month here. As far as boards and commissions, I did attend the SASSA meeting, like Councilmember Buckland's meeting. Primarily administrative issues were discussed. I did attend a Yuba Sutter Arts meeting. We discussed various fundraisers, accept a new member on the board, and we have an upcoming fundraiser. If you guys like oysters, there's a art and oysters event at Justin's Kitchen on Sunday, the twelfth, seventy-five bucks for two. It's going to be the arts version of the, the lobster feed and crab feed and whatnot, so it's going to be the first one, so it's going to be pretty good. I've got tickets too.
And they said that basically they're any style?
Yeah, any style, several styles, and all oysters are included, and there's also non-oyster food available as well. Chicken or something, so... I attended the Sister City events with the folks coming from Japan, their arrival, the welcome reception, and their send-off in the morning. Chamber breakfast as well, like Manny stated, the state of Billerford Space is very interesting. Youth Commission's fair that they had at Veterans Hall, Harvest Festival Fair. They ended up with a total of four barrels of food donated, they were donating to less fortunate folks, so it was pretty good. Rather than, I had, you kind of goes, you have to go, you can't be three places at once. Because we had representation at the Mayor's Cup, I elected to attend the... A fundraiser for Sergeant, Marysville Police Department Sergeant Parks, who is having some kidney issues and needs to have a transplant, and so I attended the fundraiser for him on that same date and time. From what I understand, it was quite profitable, so good for him. The, we had the emergency preparation training for elected officials training right here, and of course, the Sikh parade, which I look forward to every year. It's in my, kind of in my neighborhood, and always a good time. It's such a, a proud time, I think, for our city, and we're lucky to have it here. Some very good people, very good food, no problems that I'm aware of, even on the law enforcement side, nothing really significant, and it's just a really wonderful time. So, I have a few people who I've talked into coming in next week, I think, or not, next year. So, it was a good time, and Rob, your folks did outstanding, and we had some of our huge horses come up from Sacramento and the bicycle folks, and it's pretty impressive, but bottom line, great food, great music, and it's all just, every, just a really feel-good time. Everyone's there to have a good time and enjoy each other, and it was, it was fun. You, I'm sure you probably agree, it's, it's a good time, so that is it.
Mayor, if I can just interject, it only takes a moment, but these horses that the California Highway Patrol brought, they were, they were huge.
They were huge.
They were huge animals, and, and I will tell you that the road apples that they left behind...
Oh, yeah.
Were equally as huge, okay?
Luckily, they had lots of brooms going.
They had, well, I'm glad that in front of the, the head float, that they were brooming and, and sprinkling water on the, on the road, because you could have tripped on those boulders.
Well, they were, they were beautiful horses. Thank you very, is that's it? You're done? You done?
I'm done.
Oh, yeah, right. Good fertilizer. A good fertilizer. Vice Mayor did ball.
All right.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Let's see. We did the Planning Commission interviews, both of mayor and myself. We did that. We had three hours' worth of interviews, so we will have a candidate selected. And just finishing up some of the paperwork there before we make the announcement on that, had the Torrid Sister City folks visiting, and I had the privilege of hosting the vice mayor two years ago. And so, when they were here this year, they were staying with the family, and I got a call saying that they wanted to get together. So, I hosted a dinner for them on Saturday and had a wonderful time visiting with them. And then on Monday, we had the Halloween dinner, which was fantastic. It's always nice to see all the kids in their costumes, and, well, some of the adults, too. But great time with all of them, and that was about it as far as events and meetings that were going on. I did go away, unfortunately, missed the Sikh parade this year as my daughter was injured a couple of weeks ago, and these were her final season games, so we were wrapping up her season. Unfortunately, she didn't get to play because she busted her knee, so I needed to go see my baby and kind of wrap up the season with the girls there. So, I did miss the Sikh parade this year, and my first year, and the first time my daughter missed it, too, so we were talking about it because we loved the food. But anyway, from friends and family, heard it was a great, great turnout, and the weather once again survived, so... Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Very good. Okay. I had quite a busy couple of weeks. Actually, I think it was on the twenty-fourth of October, I ended up doing the interviews until near, was it nine o'clock or? Yeah, it was quite a long, had some excellent candidates this time, very pleased with that. And then the next morning, I flew to the LAFCO conference in San Diego, and it was like in the upper nineties. I stayed inside and went to the classes and got some updates, which I hadn't got, had the opportunity to, to participate in that for quite a few years, so I was very glad to get the updates on the LAFCO process, local area of government formation. Anyway, it's how you annex and do different special districts. Let's see, so I was, came back on the twenty-seventh, so I was not here for the Sister City to arrive, but then I was here, came back to make sure I was here for the Mayor's Cup. What an exciting game. The fresh, the Frosch or freshman was pretty much a slaughter by Yuba City on RV. Then the competition for the JV was absolutely down to the last two plays, and RV won by one point. See, it was twenty-one to twenty, and then the game that was played between our two great schools was absolutely fabulous. Yuba City found a way to cause RV to cough it up a couple of times, and it looked like they were actually trying to do that because they knew how fast their runners were. So, hit them hard, go for that ball, and that's what looked like what they were doing, and they succeeded in doing that. So, the Mayor's Cup was Yuba City, and I had the opportunity to go on both sides and cheer for both sides, and it was fun because a lot of the kids from RV actually knew me from church and different other functions in the, the community. I did take the adult deleg, of the delegation from Torrid City out to steak dinner or whatever they wanted at the ranch house, and they did an excellent job of cooking their, the steaks. They, they really enjoyed it, and one of them said that's the best one they've had so far in Yuba City that they've had from the ranch house. The favorite cut seemed to be New York or ribeye. Those were the primary cuts that they had wanted. Also, on Monday, went to Chico State with the Sister City delegation. The Chico actually requested that we come up there to be part of their, or interact with their Japanese program and speaking and language one up there and culture, and it turns out they have a very robust program for Japanese in Japan up there. And they had, their students actually one-on-one with our, the delegation, adults, speaking the language, interacting, and that, and some good news came out of that. The, the new president and Provost and whatever, and all of them said, "We want to have a presence in Yuba City at Yuba College." So, we're working on that. That's a different attitude they had in the past with the previous administration of that college, so we are thrilled with that. Go to the next. I was at the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, definitely had some great things happening with that, with the new funding that's coming forward. I think you sat in for me on the special meeting. Councilmember Cardoza did. Visited the fireworks on Friday night at the temple. I spent about six hours there that evening, and also did the city presentation and resolution for, for the community there and the, and the event on Friday night, and they presented myself and whoever else they wanted to with a presentation for us, a plaque. And then I, of course, was in the Sikh parade. I actually walked and all the way down to this corner right over here, the corner of... Um, I actually walked and all the way down to this corner right over here, at the corner of Pool and, uh, Civic Center Boulevard, and then that's where I stopped, the rest of them continued on. But it was a great event, um, one of the best that I know of, calmest, the most peaceful one that they've had. So, that was a, a thrill for that happening. Other than that, uh, this issue we've been working on has been my number one, uh, dealing with the solid waste, uh, services contract has been number one attention, and it looks like it's gonna be for another few days. So, uh, other than that, um, I'm done. Meeting adjourned. Oh, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry, open it up. I, I forgot about some, um, items at the very end here. Unfortunately, we have had, um, too many pass away over the last, uh, and people that are, we know really well. Uh, like to adjourn the council meeting in memory of some very special community members. Former Yuba City Battalion Chief Jeff Julian passed away on October sixteenth. Jeff retired in two thousand and seven after thirty-two years of service to our community. Jeff contributed to the growth, success, and professionalism of the Yuba City Fire Department and firefighting profession. Michael Elkins passed away, a personal friend, a very close, uh, and he passed away in his home peacefully amongst family and friends on October nineteenth. He was the parts and service manager for the future Nissan and a resident of Yuba Sutter for forty-three years, and there might be some more insight on that.
And he was also, uh, reserve police officer for the city of Yuba City from, was it eighty-five to ninety-five? To ninety-four, so he, he actually spent about ten years, um, as a reserve peace officer, and, uh, he was a, a, a great asset to our, our department, our community.
I knew he had been, but I didn't know the dates, so I was gonna leave it to the professionals there with the. Police volunteer Perry Morgan passed away on October twenty-eighth. He will be greatly missed by all. Uh, was truly one of the most selfless and genuine nice people that has ever volunteered for the city. That guy, that man was just great, smiled, made you feel welcome, made you feel safe. Um, and if he didn't know the answer, he knew exactly where to go to get it, and, and made sure you got the answer. Gonna be missed. And then, uh, Jim Kitchen, long-term, uh, member of the Marysville, uh, City Council, passed away on October thirty-first. Um, as a council member, Jim stated that his most important successes were getting the city chartered, hiring a new city administrator, and keeping baseball alive, according to the newspaper archives. Jim was also a, an economics professor at, uh, Yuba College for, uh, four decades, forty years. Very strong integral part of our community history, so, um, closing in, uh, uh, memory of those four. Now with that, meeting adjourned.